We're coming for you, we give thanks for this opportunity that you have given us to gather here, Lord, as a community. Pray that you be with us, Lord, to guide us in what is your will, and ultimately what is best for the residents of this town. Pray a blessing on everyone that is here for safety, and everyone on their way, they be brought here safely, and everyone here that they get to their final destination safely. Thank you, Lord, amen.
Amen.
All this is for, let me let you.
Let's give the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, go ahead, be Town Clerk, please, whenever you're ready, go ahead and do your roll call.
And George Jacob Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Catherine Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Lonnie Harold?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Merritts?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Poot?
Here.
Town Attorney Michael Pope?
Here.
Right, here. Okay, additions, deletions, changes, or approval of the agenda? Or the guy?
I would like to add the resolution R twenty twenty-one dash two fifteen, no, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's it?
I'd like to add Town Resolution R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Okay.
Shalom.
So I haven't read these, I'm not sure what these are about. Then we should probably go to the next meeting, we're gonna have a brand new resolution, but if you wanna add them, you can.
I definitely wanna add mine tonight.
Take that. Okay, anything else?
I wanted to, um, talk about the yard sale, which might be in the comments, but.
We can add, okay, we'll put that on Councilman comments, so.
What number?
Like the past, like a yard sale, or like a future?
Just the yard sale, yeah, future.
There you go.
So it'll be, so for Councilmember, oh, that'll be the second Councilmember comment. Being ready, we have one there. Yeah. Uh, and then, so we'll add, the first one you said was the twenty, twenty-one one, or the twenty twenty-two one?
Twenty twenty-one, two fifteen.
Okay, so that's, if we add that, that'll be eight. Twenty-one, two fifteen. And the other one is twenty twenty-two. Yeah, last one, twenty twenty-two. Okay, if that's it, go ahead, open up the, was that it? Okay, that's it, one more, more twice, alright. So, we're looking for a motion to, post it for a motion, if you wanna accept additions, if you wanna, or anyone?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with a change.
That's it, okay, just like, okay, I'll give a try. Aye. I'll post a may, post a may, so because I have a ready resolution yet. Okay, passes, we got, we got number eight, we got number nine. And y'all can give a second here. Okay. Alright, item number two is approval of the meeting minutes, we got three, we got all of the meeting minutes for the April, uh, Town Council meetings. And, and. Seven, it was sixteen, it was a special meeting in April twenty-first.
There's three different ones?
There's, yeah, yes.
I make a motion, we approve the business, April seven, April sixteen, and April twenty-third.
Okay, we got a second? I'll second it, and then I'll give everybody the chance for a vote, if they like to come and do it. Alright, so we had a motion, we had a second, go ahead, all in favor of approving those three meeting minutes, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, post a may. Okay, that passes, you're not a tweet, we got the meeting minutes now, before we go into, we have the Main Street Program, uh, liaison here from the state of Florida present, we'll open it up for public comments, and see if anybody has any public comments to make at this time. Yes, go ahead, yes, okay.
Mayor, could, could we ask for the agenda, kinda on the following thing, how we're doing on the wastewater treatment program?
Yeah, and, um, yes, I'll.
Just like you're doing on your budget, thanks, town, okay?
Yeah, I'll just mention it, for, Councilmember, house. Okay. Do we have anybody else? Before we get into it? Okay, if not, you will go ahead and, first item on the new business, the Main Street, well, it's Catherine Beck.
Alright, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you so very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and community for showing up. Uh, I am Catherine Beck, I am the State Coordinator for Florida Main Street. I've spent the day in your community with some of my colleagues. First off, I have Pam Medley with me, she's the Executive Director for Cheddenich Main Street. Jessica Nimble, who's Executive Director from Ochula Main Street. My colleague from the Department of State, Andrew Weaver, who is with National Register. And then Lisa Thompson, who is from National Main Street, that you will be hearing from for a few minutes after I made my presentation. And the purpose to come in here today was to introduce you to what Main Street is. We understood there was a lot of confusion in the program, what is it, what does it do, how does it help us, how does it impact us? So I'm gonna kinda give you that ten thousand foot view, and see if you have any questions, any concerns. Um, we had a great time walking in your community, you have some wonderful assets. You, you have things here that are worth preserving, and you should fight for that. You also have pressure coming down twenty-seven like nobody's business. And you need to be ready for that, and Main Street will help you with that. Main Street will give you the tools to help you deal with, with the impending growth that you're seeing. And we see it all throughout Florida right now. And communities that have, have not engaged, have not been prepared, who felt that nobody will come here because we're this rural community, and we don't have all these resources and assets, that's when you're most vulnerable. So thank you for your time, thank you for your interest in this, and let me introduce you to Florida Main Street. Main Street is economic development within the context of this Florida preservation. One of my favorite quotes from Ed McMahon, who is with National Main Street Board of Directors, was that people stay longer and spend more money in places that attract their affection. But no place in America will stay special by accident. So you have to work, you have to have a system in place, you have to keep things maintained, you have to tell the stories, you have to let people know who you are. Uh, I had the opportunity to be in Philadelphia a couple of weeks ago, and to see the Liberty Mall. And it was wonderful. But I can tell you, if it had not been maintained, if it had not been showcased, if they had not taken the time to tell that story, it would have been another bell. So you must remember what is important to you, to your community, why you're here, what resources and assets you wanna take from it. So we were established in nineteen eighty-five, National Main Street was established in nineteen eighty. So our program is forty years this old, yeah, forty years old this year. We did, we conduct statewide programs, we currently have fifty-four active programs, and four programs that were former Main Streets that are currently in process of reorganizing. So with the situation right now, we have the uncertainty we have in the economic situation. You know, with the populations changing and moving, and we don't recognize and we're responsible for things that are happening than they're possible. So what we, what we suggest is that you take, you take your assets, you preserve your assets, you tell the story, and create strategy of economic development based around those assets. So the next question is always, what does, what does Main Street do? Do you give us grants? No, we don't give you grants. We give you technical assistance, the Department of, of Historical Resources has grants that you can apply to. We'll connect you with grants through DE, or it was DE, you know, on old, through Connors, uh, DEP, Arts and Culture, Humanities, NEA. We make sure, you know, T-Mobile, National Main Street, we make sure that we prepare you, that information is there, and that you get it. But our role is not grants, our role is technical assistance. As newly designated Main Street, you will receive ten thousand dollars in technical assistance to kinda help you get off the ground. These are the types of items that that ten thousand dollars can be applied to, you know, your organizational development, visual merchandising, small business operations, business recruitment, uh, the list goes on and on, a lot of planning. You can use it for a website, you can use it for community visioning. So the, the board will make that decision, design guidelines. You know, there are a lot of opportunities to put money on the street pretty quickly, to give you a, a big foundation to move forward as a Main Street community. The other thi, the other benefit is that you have a reconnaissance team that comes in, well, you're here today, and we're here part of tomorrow, to go through, and you will get a report back, uh, the Main Street Board will get it, and will, I'm sure, share it with the community, so that you'll know what we saw, what we thought, and what the recommendation is. Uh, you do have a yearly assessment from me, which is maybe not so much fun. Um, scholarships to training programs, you know. Uh, what Florida Main Street does is every year, for the National Main Street Conference, if you are an accredited program, or if you are an apprentice program, which is that first three years, we pay for one scholarship registration to National Main Street's conference. Because we feel it's very important that you have access to that level of training, uh, and expertise. And you also, as a, as a part of the Main Street community, have access to national's resources. When you go onto National Main Street's website, there's a lot of information that's public facing, that Jewish community members can see. When you are a part of that community, and you get behind that page, there's a lot of information, a lot of resources, a lot of library material that's available to you, that the general public does not have access to. And, and that's one of the reasons that partnership with national is so important to all of our communities. These are just a few of the types of Main Street projects that you'll see, these are pretty standard types of projects. Um, these are art works, you know, paid for by grants, uh, public art, this is Ocala, uh, events, we do events. We are, we are not long-term event planners, I wanna make that very clear to you, our role is, is economic development. And however, we recognize that having events is part of that formula that needs to be done. What you want to avoid is becoming an event organization. Your role is, is much more important in the design, planning, the implementation of changes and revitalization in the downtown, than whether or not you're having, you know, pop-ups every, every month. So please bear that in mind as a community. Uh, you know, we do training, community building exercises, street skating, and then actual preservation. And why is your downtown important? You know, and you may have asked yourself this thing over the years, you know, your downtown has changed. At one time, it was a hub here. Now history tells us, everybody's driving out twenty-five minutes to buy groceries. Okay? So what happened, what changed? Why is your downtown important? And what do you wanna bring back into that environment? Downtown is a major employer. Downtown employs small businesses. Small businesses make up seventy-five percent of our national workforce. It's huge. Majority of those, and I think the number, and Lisa, you may correct me, I think the number's eighty percent hire less than ten people. Small business is key to a successful community. Your downtown infrastructure is, is a major investment, and I hear we got sewer coming in, we've got water coming in, a lot of money coming into that downtown, and it's been here all along. It's not just starting today, it goes back a hundred years. They put down roads, they put in lights, they put in fire hydrants, they put, you know, all those things add up. So that investment has been made, why would you walk away from an investment? You need to maintain it, you need to keep it moving. Your downtown has an impact on your residential values also. Now, you have a lot of residential within your downtown area, so specifically, this community. If you have a downtown that is not maintained, that is abandoned buildings, and it's, you know, broken glass, your property values as individual owners also are impacted by that. And downtown is the heart of your community. And I can tell you today, from the people that we met, who came in, you have a lot of people in this community that care about this community. You have deep roots here. We had met people whose families came in here in the mid-seventeen hundreds, and we met people whose families came here twenty years ago. And they all have that commitment, they have that drive, that ambition. You're very fortunate, you're very fortunate. So much of Florida is transitional. People do not understand the history, they don't understand the drive, they don't understand the motivation. You're very fortunate, you have people who care here. And downtown is a, is a perfect public space, it is a place for people to gather, to have discussions, to meet the neighbors, you know, to come to, to, to pop up, so we're having the Fourth of July celebration, whatever it is. Public space is important to the health of your community. It's a, it's an area where you can go, where you can shake hands, where you can relax. So keep that in mind, that park is, is not a wasted space. That, that park is part of what binds your community. So here's, you know, another example of what Main Street is, and, you know, this, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, this is, uh, Fernandina Beach. You know, when Fernandina came in, they had like a ninety-five percent vacancy. It was a port that was in a downspile. Buildings had been vacant since the seventies. They, you know, they were not maintained, they were used as storage. It was filthy, it was dirty, it was high crime. And the community came together and said, we really need to do something about this, and they started. It takes time, this didn't happen overnight. They're now a twenty-year program, it's a very different program area than when they came in. And it's all because someone cared. So historic preservation, economic development, community engagement, and design and beautification, that's what we do. It's very simple, it's a very simple process. We're not here to tell you how to run your lives, we're not here to tell you how to run your businesses, we're here to help you. It's a proven model, this is the model that was developed by Mary Means, from Main Street America. And it works, and it works in a community your size, and it works in a community the size of Jacksonville. So Florida Main Street promotes sensible sustained economic growth, based on local assets, natural, natural, go cultural, financial, and human. All of those things are assets in your community, and people, people think of assets as money, tangible things. People starting to rec, recognize environmental assets, recreational assets, your human assets are your story. Key, key for you. That was just communities, and revitalizing their downtowns and neighborhood business districts, is that's what we do. So to maintain your status as a Main Street, the, these are the things that you have to do, and, and you have to do them every year. You have to have a vision and mission statement. And your Main Street will be working with you as they create that vision and mission statement. What do we wanna do in this downtown? Who are we? What do we tell them the world? What are the goals? What are the objectives? You know, and, and again, comprehensive goals, objectives, and work plans, as Lisa will always tell you, we need to, they need to be transactional. You need to be able to track it, to mark it, to see the, the implementation, and what the results are. And you're not gonna win with everything, understand that. It's a lot of learning, you know, a lot, a lot of joy, and some tears. Because sometimes, sometimes you make a mistake as a community. But that's okay, it is a learning experience, you have learned. And the nice thing is about that, you have the opportunity to network with all these other Main Streets. And it's just, it's all time, it's like, there's nothing that one of these other Main Streets can't do. If it isn't Florida Main Street, there's one of the other sixteen hundred across the nation. Gives an answer for everything, it may not be the exact same issue. It may not be for a community your size, but you can take it and tailor it, and make it work for any of your environment. You have to have community support. It is very important that the community supports the program, that your local officials support the program, that everybody is moving forward in partnership. Not to say we're not gonna have discussions about things. Not to say there aren't gonna be times that the Main Street comes forward and says, we wanna close all these windows, and the city goes, not on a Saturday. You know, but that's okay, that's okay. You have those discussions, you understand the program, you develop a process, okay? Have to have an executive director. Executive directors are key, executive directors are the program managers. Their job is not there to, to run around and, and do all the event work, it is, their job is to make sure that your committees are performing, that they're following that work plan, that they're not hitting roadblocks, they don't need some help. And it's, it's a key role, and, and Florida Main Street, National Main Street, both are, are very sincere, we say you have got to have an executive director. Without an executive director, you have a bunch of volunteers that may or may not show up. Uh, you have to maintain your relationship with, with your state and local governments. Your lo, your local people are very important to you, and you see them every day, and they're gonna know what's going on. But your people at the state and federal level are just as important, and most of them will not know what's going on in your district if you don't tell them. Uh, you have to have an adequate operating budget, you have to have travel and training money. We require that the executive director attends three quarterly workshops a year, and our conference. Our conference this year is in Fernandina Beach. It is intensive training, we run it Tuesday through Friday. Um, in that four-day period, we have sixty-four, uh, tutorials that will, will be engaged in presentations on the U.S., it's very intensive training. Uh, and, and you, and you just have to do that. And as a new program, there's a lot to take in, it's kinda like drinking from the fire hose, but, but you'll learn, you'll learn. You have to document the effectiveness of, of your program, and we do that through statistics, I've collected a report. And, and the nice thing about that is you, as a community, can see where you're starting to make results, at least numerically. So that when you come to the Senate Commission, you go, what have you done? And you go, well, this is what we've done, we did three cleanups, and, you know, we had a line walk, and then we, we started working on a grant, you know, the depot, and, and as a result of that, what we got in here is six hundred and fifty-two volunteer outlets this year. Huge, huge, we need that kind of volunteer time in, in your community. Uh, you wanna, you wanna participate in our network, again, our network is your strength, it's your safety network. You must, you must maintain your membership, your annual membership with the National Main Street Association. The first three years, Florida Main Street actually pays that for the program area. And after that, it's like, it's seventy-five dollars a year. And, and there's a law agreed with Florida Main Street. It says that, you know, the board is willing to do the things we expect of them, in terms of attending training, in terms of keeping an executive director, in terms of collecting data, and interacting with, with other people within the network. Now, let's have a budget, and, yeah, we're back to this training thing, I'm telling you, this is real important, training is very important. We put a lot of money and resources into bringing people in to these quarterly workshops and the other conferences. And we do that so that, because we know communities can't do that. You can't hire in the contractors, you can't hire in the planners, you can't, you know, hire in the people that we bring in, the people that teach you to tell the stories, to take the pictures, to put together a vision and plan. But we can, and we can give you access to that through our training programs. So it's very important that that relationship be maintained. And then we're bringing to what the four point approach is, and I think Lisa's gonna talk a little bit about this, right? And we call it the Transformation Strategy. And that's part of what we have been doing here, there were surveys that national has done since first part of April, so for six weeks. Y'all responded very well, frankly, to the survey in terms of numbers. We've done surveys where we've seen less than ten people respond. In, in a very large area, you know, you're kind of young people, you didn't warn them, they don't. You had over three hundred respondents. And, and I mean, and that's huge, that's huge, it says people care. This is they're paying attention to what's going on, that they wanna have a voice. So thank all of you, you responded to those surveys, and you have been proactive in, in lending your opinions to your Main Street Board. These are the four points that we talk about, design, promotion, organization, and economic vitality. And that's what your work plans will run through. You have the four committees, organization obviously takes care of, of the finer points of it. Making sure your bylaws are placed, making sure annual reports are done, making sure you got, you know, board members in place. That's the organizational thing, making sure, fundraise, making sure that organization is functional and is healthy. Economic vitality is this idea, where you look at it, and you say, what do we need downtown? Maybe an ice cream shop. Okay, let's start talking to people, let's start seeing what we've got. Well, what do we need to do downtown? We gotta get the sewer in. Nothing happens with that, how can we help, what do we do? Do we just start talking to people and saying, eighteen months, two years from now, we're gonna be ready. We'd like you to look at our downtown. Design, design's very important, and, and design is probably one of the things that you'll hear some concern from us on. Your downtown needs to be cleaned up, it looks very tired. It doesn't look horrible, it doesn't look bad, it looks tired. So it needs a little sprucing out, and that's an area Main Streets can help you in. Main Streets are great, they're coming in, pulling volunteers together, you know, every month, or every quarter, cleaning it up, getting some bushes trimmed, you know, maybe taking some water, doing some windows and stuff. Yeah, it, it's, it's just, you know, when you live somewhere, when you live in your house, you walk by stuff every day, and you see it, and you don't see it. When new eyes come in, and they see things, they go, mm, oh, this would be so pretty at that bush one day. You know, so, so you, as wards of your community, really need to start looking at things from a little different perspective. If you didn't know the town, if you weren't comfortable in the town, if you didn't know the people, what would you see? And that's what you need to ask yourself. And then promotion, and this is the fun side of it, and this is what everybody wants to do, and it's events, and it's bringing people in. And you gotta do it, and I'll steer you away from it as quickly as I can, because you should not become an event organizer. You should, as a community, identify one, two, maybe three major events that you would do to pull people in, that relate to your history, to your background, the product you produce. Don't fall into the trap of, remember, we've got to have an event. Again, the first few years, you probably will, you may have first Fridays, you may have, you know, Saturday, Mondays, to introduce the community, to get people used to coming back into downtown. But that's not your mission, that's not your mission. That's not your mission. And these are some of our Main Street communities, you know, Havana, a small community up in Gadsden County, Stewart, B'Alano. You can see the difference in the types of communities that come in. Again, there's small rural communities and then, yeah, major inner city communities that come in. And what we do find is that the needs are the same, the intensity is different. And based on numbers from National Main Street to date, for every dollar invested in the Main Street area, for every public dollar invested as of June thirty, and that's a national number. Florida's numbers, in twenty seventeen, we actually had this analysis done. Our numbers were actually much higher. Our number was fifty-four. Well, and I believe that for Florida, because you have to, we're a low elevated environment, right? Right? So, so it's not going to be the same in Fort White as it is in Miami, right? But when you look at a national basis, and it's a leader one return, and a Main Street plus one, it's three. But you know, that's what it says to businesses. When they know elected leadership, when they know the community, takes pride in an area, when they're putting resources into it, when they want to maintain it, it makes me, as a business on our council, say, "That's kind of a neat place. Maybe I can open a little shop there." And so, for forty years, this is what we've done. So what kind of questions do you have?
All right, thank you, Mr. Beck. Um, I'll open it up, I guess, first of all, here for the council. So you ran one council has questions or comments or anything?
No comment. Excellent. It should have come about six months ago.
Very important. I'm excited about the program. Sounds like a great investment for the town. So yes, I'm happy that this is available to us.
Great, thank you. And is this the smallest town hall y'all presented in?
This is the smallest.
It used to be in our life.
We want to keep up your records. And explain a little bit more about tired versus just cutting the hedge or cleaning the window. Or does that, and I don't want you to say what his place was mess.
Yeah, no, tired just needs to be screw stuff, you know? And it does include, you know, making sure maybe bushes are trimmed back, windows are washed, maybe we should even cut the paint, you know? Maybe we need fresh to wash the sidewalks. It's not white. You don't have white.
Yes.
But you know, we need to go spray that paint on Saturday night, you know? That's what you need to spruce it back a little bit.
Everybody sound Lisa?
Yes, good, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, we got so many people that reached out to you.
Yes.
Didn't know there was that many. Really, didn't they care?
Yes.
Because you come to some of these meetings, and this is one of the bigger ones we've had. You come there sometimes with three people. Sometimes you wonder if people care enough.
Yeah, well, your, your community cares. I mean, we live with them today. We had, we had great support and attendance from residents, from businesses, from proprietors. So yes, you have people who care. Yes, sir.
So have you ever had experience with a small town? Not as small as Fort White.
Not as small as Fort White. But, but you know what? It's, it's okay. Because frankly, I think you have better assets than a lot of my larger communities who think they have and do have more physical resources and everything. You have the people who care. And this is what's going to make or break this program. Is your volunteers and your commitment to your community.
Right. So the second part of that question is, with limited budgetary offerings, financial offerings from the town, have you ever had experience where you had a town that was all in, everybody wanted to do it, but the town just didn't have a lot of money in the bank?
We have a couple that are that way.
How do you overcome those challenges?
Well, what happened is, first thing is your Main Street has to look for things that they can do inexpensively. Cleaning up your downtown. That don't take a lot of dollars. It takes some muscle. It takes some motion at times, okay? These people are going to start going out. And, you know, when they do things to pull people in, guys or sponsorships, some local businesses, who are we going to help? You have to know who wants people coming in. I will tell you, it's hard to not have city support. Matter of fact, Danny Chetan, who she's here, and Dr. Michael, they have lost this dollar support from their communities. So they, for the last six years, they have had to work on their own and do it, and it's hard. And they do some good things with it. Now, it's not going to be as fast as somebody who has some additional resources coming in and they give some stability to that program because they're not having to worry about, "Oh, are we keeping doors up for this month?" Right? And there are a lot of things Main Streets do that just for the community. They're not making money on it. You know, it's, it's something to brand the people, and to say thank you to the community, to support the community, but, but there's no dollar value, right? We're not charging when it comes through the gate. So, you know, I'm hoping that over time, you know, as you're progressing as a community, I mean, one of the things we talked with them about today was the county. I mean, the county's also a part of it. So there are maybe some of the resources that can be looked at and utilized. You can't define them totally on grant funding because grants no longer pay, are very few and paid, for administrative support and overhead and that type of thing. And it was time when they did. Yeah, and then, you know, people who were developing these grants, largely putting forty-two percent in overhead, who wanted to go to murals. So they started writing out that administrative side on these grants. So it's been very hard to not provide.
Right. That's awesome. I just, you know, I'm encouraging, you know, want to encourage everybody to participate, but, you know, I was just worried about, you know, everybody full steam ahead and then, you know, when you get that first challenge where you need money and it's not available and the town can't actually write a check, you know?
Right.
Is there experience?
Well, I mean, and that'll be driven, that'll be driven by their work plan. And I think frankly that this group has a hard, strong enough hold on it that they realize they don't have the budget to work with. That's one of the things we talked about today. It's like, you know, what can we apply for? We can apply for a two-mobility grant, and it'll cost us something. And maybe that'll help us get, you know, parking for that. You can apply for DHR grant, they don't cost you anything. But it's going to be limited, and so we talked about what services will be provided to that area. So, you know, I mean, your town's a great stop, so.
Exactly.
And then, real quick, so we've got to time box this, and we've got time for one, maybe two more questions.
Thanks.
Before we got a lot of, anybody else got anything?
I want to say a little bit, because I would feel bad if I could say, because like, what do we bring to the community, blah, blah, blah? I'm from Gainesville, but my grandmother's from here, and we bring a lot of love in this community. And I was here as a grandchild for years and years. And this is still today the most loving memories and roots and investment that I have. And I'd just like for us all to have, if you have even a portion of how I feel about it, then it's a good thing.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Beck. Please, I'm out here.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the lease. They had submitted this to us prior, right before the last meeting. We haven't had a chance to review it, not even the full page. We had mentioned leasing out the training depot for the Main Street board to use for, what does that take, a dollar a year? So there's a lease. It says the company.
So I came up with Mr. Pope about that when I saw it on the agenda. And some concerns that I had, or that the lease should, in my opinion, be prepared by the town attorney. And I think it should address some issues such as, you know, who would be responsible for, for instance, insurance, you know, grounds of the, the everyday maintenance issues. If we're going to lease the entire property, the depot building and the property around it, you know, would the organization be responsible for ensuring that maintaining it, maintaining everyday maintenance issues that come up? I think it should be leased as is. And they should handle any routine maintenance issues, like small issues. But if you have a major structural issue or a safety issue, then that should be addressed in the lease that, you know, comes before the council to be addressed. And, you know, obviously, the town can handle fixing that and making it work and continue to use and break and help. Obviously, we have to, you know, give the lease. But anyhow, just, you know, things like that, just the property, how that would be handled and then, you know, maybe a dispute resolution process. And then, my thoughts on it are, I just learned about this from Dana Pasquillo Friday, whenever she talked to me about the event. I wasn't at the meeting when this was brought up, but I missed the meeting. But, you know, I'm open to the idea. I personally thought about a couple of different options, you know, leasing the entire property. First thing, leasing a room. I'd have to go down there and look at it. It's been a while since I've been in there, but I don't know if it would be possible to put in a door and just lease them one office and then other use of the space, you know, as needed. But that's one option. And then the other option would be to, you know, lease them the whole building and grounds and everything. So that's, that's my thoughts on it.
I mean, the town has insurance on it. It's town property, so we, our guys maintain everything. It says they'll keep it clean. Have you got a chance to read yet? It's like, I've got your page.
I did read it. It's very short. But I don't mind if you guys want to direct me to draft one. I don't mind drafting one, it's just concerns, you know, to send us all.
Did you have any concerns with how it's written?
It wouldn't hurt, as Mr. Arnold said, that would add this up. And honestly, just for protection, protection for the town. But ultimately, decision feedback.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like our attorneys are recommending us to, you draft one. Send percent back.
Yes.
Okay. So floor's open for a motion? Or is it a motion?
He's drafting one to include insurance and we need to be clear on what we want to include in it.
Is this being open for public discussion too?
Anybody from Main Street have anything to say? I'll, if they're the ones who came last time, bring it up. Guy, guy, I think.
I think we'll say it whenever the lease is done or whatever. I, I feel that, I mean, you guys know that we have no funding. So just keep that in mind whenever you think about insurance. Because, yeah, we have no funding.
Not only that, like, we're dying to do stuff to fix it up, to make it look nicer. Until we have an agreement, we're not going to be able to pressure wash it, to paint it, to fix anything that needs to be fixed. And it's just being delayed, you know, over and over again. I understand the concerns and I'm all for it, but it's just a way to speed up the process. We greatly appreciate it.
I think the lease should come from Mr. Pope, just because.
Not disagree with that at all, just expressing how we feel and what we would like. That's all.
And this is silly, but those no trespassing signs need to come down. Like today, y'all had many important guests there. It's plagued with those.
Should we make some ones that look nice to put up? Or not worry about that?
Well, now, this is me projecting, it's not my business. Is the Main Street office going to be open where, you know, I can come in and see what you have hanging on the wall or talk to the director? Because if you're in there serving the public, you don't want to have no trespassing signs.
Yeah, no trespassing is for like after hours or when we're not open. Just to let vandals know that, hey, don't go up on this property and do whatever.
Well.
But I assume the trespassing is.
Right, trespass, right, trespassing is.
I know it's trivial, but they need to be gone.
Yeah, trespassing is unauthorized. Not authorized. So we had people in there going in, I think you broke the windows. There was a guy living out of the plaza. I don't know that we should remove the trespassing sign without written by the public towards these guys. I'm sure there's a reason it's there. I know there was a guy living in there for, I don't know, a few months or something. So, but, I mean, that's, that's beside the point, right? Floor's open for a motion as far as this.
It's not beside the point because it's, if it's going to be open to the public, it needs to be a friendly offering.
Right. But I'm talking about, right now, this lease agreement. Floor's open for a motion. What does counsel want to do?
I have a question. What, what issues do you need us to tell you now for you to be able to draft that lease? I mean, what do you need from us?
Right, so if you're not going to prove it as is, you can just direct me to add those additions and they just discussed with the insurance, but who's in charge of the maintenance, all of those things. I can add those in, I can have it here at the next meeting, and then you guys can review it and hopefully we can pass it in, or you can pass it as is now, you know, whatever you want.
But do we need to come to an agreement as the council on who provides insurance? If they lease the entire property and who does, you know, say, electric bill, the grounds care? You know, I mean, we need dollar and all that about now for you to be able to make the contract?
Are we currently doing all of that?
Yes.
If we're currently doing it, I can just keep it as it is currently.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is the council, is everybody in agreement?
Is there anybody opposed to what we're current? I mean, we're currently maintaining that we didn't give them the $24,000 for the executive position. I think we need to meet them halfway and just continue with what we're doing. But we need specifications on insurance, who is maintaining. But I'm not saying that you all do the insurance. I'm just saying it needs to be all written in the lease. So I'm not opposed to us continuing with the upkeep of what we're doing with the insurance and all of this. I mean, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
The business does not have an initiation. You don't have a, you don't have your.
We're in the process.
At the moment, no.
As a non-for-profit, we don't have. We just incorporated, we're in depositing a non-for-profit status, contributions. We're already done to accept donations. But as far as insurance, not, we don't have any insurance.
But it's one of the first things that we want to get once we get funding.
And I don't know that it's a good idea for it to be, especially if we're trying to get it listed as a historic building for the town. It's a non, I think the town's going to insure it anyway, like now. Whether you're saying if they're like primary or the secondary, but it's not insurance.
One thing you guys need to keep in mind too is this is a business that's really just starting. They actually aren't doing anything quite yet. So what are they insured for? You guys have to get.
Somebody falling down that door hurting themselves.
They don't have a lease yet. And you guys have to agree, you guys have two people, these men that said the lease should, the insurance should be maintained on account of the city. They don't need to do that yet. They haven't got a lease to work on yet. So that's all then.
Yeah, so, so for now, we'll deliberate amongst ourselves only. According to your expertise as an attorney and what we've said, are you comfortable you can come up with a lease agreement for us here to present?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So floor's open for a motion to direct him to do.
My concern.
Or we can just direct him to do it really?
I'm all for it. I'm the one that offered this, or called it up. But my concern with insurance, don't take one person to get her.
Yeah, I'm sure people our attorney will cover us all that.
Do we need to discuss that with our insurance provider and see if it's leased? If the person that leases has to provide their own insurance or? I can contact them. If we're currently covering it, I mean, we'll probably try and just continue with the way that it is. But I'll contact them to verify.
See, that's what my thought was, if we just allow them to use the space, like, you know, we allow people to use the community center, then there's no change in insurance necessary. But if we lease it to them, then it belongs to them for a year, whatever six months are long. So, you know, my, I just want to make sure that we, you know, protect the town. And we don't want to find out after something happens that, you know, hey, when you lease that, then those people have to get insurance. So we protect them.
Would you be okay if we get to these and we just wrote an agreement just to allow them to use it?
Actually, that's what I thought. I missed the meeting two, two months ago. That's what I thought was going to happen. That we were just going to allow them to use it like we do, you know, the soccer club at the community center. And so, you know, then there was the, you know, discussion of the executive director having to have an office and all that stuff. So that's why I brought up, the other option would be to let them, you know.
So that's why I brought up, the other option would be to let them, you know, uh, have an office down there. And, and in that case, they, they wouldn't have the whole property, so the town would still have to insure it. And then, you know, but, but I understand there's no door on the smaller room, so, you know, if we, if we lease them one room, then they would have, you know, we could have to build a door or something, so.
So maybe attorney, you can just draft up lease, lease, and then just an agreement like, hey, y'all can use it just within these parameters, no lease, just for just letting them use it. Let's do that. Okay, all right, so I'm, so, okay, I make a motion that. We table this.
He's on the board of Main Street.
Aren't we on the hook for a lot more if we just do that? The city itself, responsible for everything.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, I, I don't know, we'll see what our attorney say, I mean, we can.
I'm wishing we'd come up with it. I'm just asking, I'm asking questions before we push on.
Yeah, well, I think.
We better delay it again. They don't need to delay so much of what we're doing.
I'm gonna draft a lease and then also a rental agreement and then we can compare the present costs.
Yeah, or lease or I guess not, not a rental agreement, just, or is that, would it be, if we just don't charge them, if we just allow them to use it?
Yeah. For a dollar, annual rent or whatever you wanna call it.
Okay, all right. Okay, very well, so I make a motion then that you do what you just said. Is there something?
We need to draft a motion or we just?
Yeah, motion is, okay, motion is that.
We need to draft a motion or we just need to give you direction?
Directing, do it, that's fine.
I'm gonna need a motion.
Okay, very well, so we do that, so the motion then, all right, so we'll table this. So the next meeting is when we, if we, attorney, the opportunity to present that to the council. I'm making a motion, I guess, and we table it for the next meeting, is there a second?
First, in the meeting, something, like, don't y'all have another meeting very soon and you wanna get this going? Like, does that no trespassing sign apply to them in the meantime? Or do they have access to?
No, we're not trespassing.
This is for, right, trespasses. Okay, is there, wait, is there, is, is there a second?
Are we gonna schedule a, I mean, we talked last, last meeting about scheduling a special meeting. Are we gonna have this in a special week?
We can put, yeah.
I mean, the very next meeting is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Seven.
All right, I'll give a second. All right, all right, post a name. Okay, very well, all right, thank you, okay. I think we have one of, uh, the, uh, who was that, I think Seacoast people, y'all had somewhere to be, so we're gonna go ahead and let you.
Sure.
Present.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank y'all for coming.
Now, it is my pleasure.
Okay, all right, so, and just to give a quick, uh, sir. To give a quick background, so back in, if everyone in the, uh, audience, please, y'all good, and you see what I'm here. So to give some background, I think, I wanna say it was back in January or so, we, I think we were probably in the, new services. I think it was Seacoast, and so I says, hey, let's, let's shop around. So we have different financial institutions here and they're gonna, almost their wares, basically.
So the remaining audience in favor. The good news is we all get along, we are doing different things, so. But first of all, welcome, everyone that's here, thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak. We know how valuable everybody's time is. We can go in as much depth as you would like, we can keep a very high overview. We did already provide, uh, performer to the board that was sent out, that everybody did receive a copy of. So just briefly, um, as the mayor said, we are fortunate that we already have an established relationship with the town of Fort White that we're very grateful for. It was brought to our attention, um, once the mayor was elected, that there was possibly some additional services that they would like for the accounts that they did currently have with us. So we did, myself, along with Stacy Garrity, I apologize, I'm Heather Graham, I'm under the commercial banking of Columbia County. This is Stacy Garrity, one of my treasury partners who covers our area as well. We were asked to come and do a presentation on additional services that was brought up, um, from some of the councils and the mayor that could possibly help them. And one of the things that we like to do is make sure that, um, we streamline the processes to make it easy and convenient for any of our clients. One, to save time, and two, to earn money, which are two things that everybody loves. So that's really what we did when we did the presentation initially, are some of the services. Those services being a remote deposit capture, so that it would keep you from having to come to a location. You would have the device here in our off, or here in your office, where you can run the checks through and make deposits to have your same-day deposit, along with other protection services through our treasury services team, through ACH and positive pay, which we go into a little bit more, which I will turn over to Stacy on that. Tonight, we did bring, we did not know what audience was gonna be here. The mayor did ask us to bring a proposal where we do show the interest that we can earn, um, in addition to having all of the features and benefits of the services that we do have to offer. It is up to you to let them know if you want to share that with everyone. If you would like to keep that private look, I think, um, you have it in front of you as there as well. So you will let us know how you would like us to perform that, if you want to open it up to the public. It does have balances on there, um, when we originally were told we were presenting. We didn't know that there'd be a private share of balances, I know that's confidential information unless you say yes, so.
You, um, I think. Yeah, I think it's good.
You want us to open that, okay. So, um, first, just a little bit of history, I know, um, when Main Street was here, they were talking, they are forty years. I know somebody out of a bank that you've been established a while. We are coming up on our hundredth year upon the, the bank, at Seacoast Bank. So just a little bit of, um, history of how big we are in our, um, asset base. We're almost hitting approaching fifteen million in assets. So we are a very robust organization. Um, one thing we are proud of is why Stacy is one of our partners, is because we have a treasury services team that sets up our front of the organization, that can offer you, at a price that you would not have to pay whilst they're still earning interest on the money. So, do you wanna share a little bit more, do you wanna get into the performance and talk about the services?
And, and just really quick, um, so Seacoast Bank, just overall, we've been around almost a hundred years, coming up on a hundred years. We're based out of Stewart, Florida. Um, this is your local experts, so of course Heather Graham is the commercial banker, I'm your treasury sales officer. And then Kayla is our branch manager at the Lake City location. And then Hannah is also our commercial banking coordinator on the commercial side as well. So you have a team of experts to help you with your banking. Um, as Heather mentioned, um, our treasury services are very robust, so we can offer all the treasury services that the larger banks would offer. We're for a large, couple of large banks, and I can tell you hands down that our treasury team is the best. It's white glove service, it's a dedicated team. I'm your primary, um, contact for the treasury services, but if it's something that I can't answer or can't handle, then you have a dedicated team that you can reach out to and they can help you, and they're amazing. And then, of course, we have, you know, business, commercial banking, we have a full wealth management, uh, department, which is also, um, fantastic. And then of course, the personal banking piece. So here is an overview of the treasury solutions, this is based on the March statement. Um, we have a very unique, uh, account that we can offer municipalities, and it's a hybrid account. So it gives us the opportunity to offer you an earnings credit to help offset any service fees that you would receive for that month. And then on whatever remaining balances that we don't use to offset the fees, you're earning interest on those funds. So the earnings credit is one percent, and the standard ECR is typically twenty basis points, point two zero. Interest rate, we gave you one and a half on those, uh, remaining funds. And then the services that we're offering would be the ACH origination, which allows you to create an ACH payment. You can send it same day, you can send it next day, or even future date. If, if you're able to transition any check writing over to the ACH, we highly recommend that, because it's less chance of fraud. And fraud is awful, it's not getting better, I can tell you that. Um, online banking plus is just our, uh, treasury platform, online wire, which allows you to send a wire from your online banking versus having to go into the branch to send the wire. And then the remote deposit, which allows you to also make those deposits from here in your office versus having to go to a branch and make those deposits. You can make deposits up to eight PM at night, and it's next day availability. So based on the March statement, your average collective balance was a little over a million dollars. So based on those services that we're offering, uh, your estimated monthly fees were a little over five hundred. The balances required to offset the, those fees where you're not paying any fees at all would be seven hundred thousand. The earnings credit, again, the one percent based on the average collective balance. The earnings credit that is eight hundred fifty-three dollars, that can go towards any service fees. So your service fees were a little over five hundred. The credit that you can use towards those fees is a little over eight hundred. So you have a net of a little over two hundred dollars that can go towards any other services that, you know, you may have that month. The excess balances that you did not use to offset the fees were three hundred thirty, three, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, and you were earning an interest rate of one and a half percent. So the interest earned would be four sixteen. So the great thing about this type of account is that it's all-in-one account. So you can offset fees and earn interest all in the same account versus having an operating account and then a separate interest-bearing account, where you're having to manage two accounts.
So the difference in having those two accounts, um, when it comes to interest earnings, um, how, how does that pan out? So whenever you have the interest-bearing account separate from your checking, um, you're saying that on this type of account, you come out ahead?
You do come out ahead, yes.
And just to make it clear, just like bottom line, at the end of the month, based on this proposal, what we're earning? Well, it's the four, it's the four seventeen.
As of March statements, four sixteen would be your excess earning credit, inclusive of all of the service that you would have. You would not pay for those and you would still have four hundred and sixteen dollars earned.
That would be right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so this is the figures for the hybrid account, you have the figures for the two separate accounts?
I, I don't, no, this would be my recommendation, this would be the best, and I can get that for you, so you can see the difference. But this would be the best scenario for you, yeah. And it's less that you have to manage as well.
Right.
Good, okay, all right, we'll keep, we'll keep rolling, I'm, I'm sure, I'm, I imagine at the end will be when the questions come.
Okay, of course, of course, well, thank you, thank you.
Okay, very much thank you, and then next, you guys Seacoast first, everybody. First Federal, yes. Reduce your sound and. I think this was about five to seven minutes.
Good evening, we, we did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation. You have a, a notebook there in front of you that has a robust proposal in front of you. And in addition, we just gave you a bag that has our twenty twenty-four angle, um, summary, that's so you can know more about First Federal. I'm just gonna take a minute and introduce myself, my name is Renee Williams, I work for First Federal. And I have with me Pam Cochran and Sarah Lippy. So we're each gonna say a little something, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Pam, she's gonna start us off. Okay?
Okay.
Good evening, everybody, I'm gonna give you a little bit of our history for First Federal. Um, we were founded in nineteen sixty-two by John Flood and seven businessmen from Swannecommie, Florida. We have been in business for sixty-three years. Um, again, Mr. Flood was our first president. Um, his son-in-law Keith Lickery joined the bank, um, in nineteen seventy-four, and he became our president and CEO in nineteen eighty-one. John Medina most recently joined us as president and CEO six years ago in two, twenty nineteen. And he is our president and CEO cur, currently. So over the last sixty-three years, First Federal has grown to sixty-three community banking branches, seven mortgage offices, and we have other divisions within our bank. Um, specifically in Columbia County, we have three retail branches. Um, our mall office and our main boulevard branch was established in nineteen eighties, I don't know exactly what years, but, um, in the eighties. And then our newest branch in Columbia County, our operations center on Highway ninety west. And the branch inside of that was opened in twenty-ten. Collectively, bank-wide, we have approximately six hundred employees, and a hundred and forty-one of those are working in Columbia County. Our purpose is maintaining our, maintaining our legacy of providing long-term stability for our communities, our customers, and our team members. And our goal is to be a stable place for customers and banks and our employees to work. We have the honor of holding several distinct rankings. Um, we've been named best small bank in Florida by Newsweek magazine over the past four years, or four years in a row. We were named top mid-tier bank in Florida by American Banker in twenty-twenty-one. Since two thousand, we have a five-star superior rating by Bowser Financial. We are proud to be voted, to be voted best bank in Columbia, Alachua, and in Beaufort counties. And we also have the honor of being named employer of the year by the Lake City Chamber of Commerce. And as Renee stated, you have our twenty-twenty-four annual report included in your packet. We also like to partner with local agencies, and we focus on programs that help our local communities and build the bank on relationships. Our team members actively volunteer at community events. Our senior management team members and board members also serve on community boards, such as Columbia County Senior Services, United Way, Habitat for Humanity, and many others. And I will now turn it over to Ms. Renee.
Really take a moment, um, just to thank you all for your, this opportunity to meet with you. And, um, we met with, um, the mayor and the city, and the town clerk and the assistant town clerk, and had a good discussion, it was about a two-hour discussion, we talked a lot about your needs and what you were looking for, and then the financial institution. And I really believe that we can be that partner for you. Um, and in the proposal that you have in front of you, it would look like this, it's got a breakdown, um. So if you actually flip to page, sorry, I did not have it marked.
Is it the one with the rates on it? I think it's.
Page eight.
Okay.
Yeah, page eight. Um, so we also did, uh, we used the same type of methodology that most financial institutions use. We break it down and do an analysis. Um, and we look at your overall, um, service and needs. And so when we met with the mayor, we had a good conversation about what you guys were looking for. Um, and so this breaks down just what hap, we looked at three months' worth of your statements, and then an, then an analysis, um. And we understand that some of your accounts are actually. And we understand that some of your accounts are actually grant-based funds, so they cannot be co-mingled with other funds. They have to remain safe and remain separate. So the idea of one account is not actually feasible for you. So we've taken that into consideration because mixing co-mingling grants funds is a no-go. You've got to show all of those things. So we've taken all of that into consideration when we look at your relationship. And we are offering you a rate that's based on the Fed Fund rate. So the Fed Fund rate right now today is 4.33 and we're offering you 40 basis points of that. So basically, we're paying you, we would offer to pay you 1.73 on all of your dollars collectively, but still be able to maintain all of those accounts that it's important for the integral part of those operation of those grants. And then also with that is the remote deposit capture. We also offer all of the online services and I'm not going to dive too deep in that because Sarah Libby is with us and she's our corporate service specialist and she's going to share more about that. And then, so we can basically customize this. We've made recommendations in this proposal that we've taken away from what we think is a best fit for your organization. First Federal is a qualified public depositor, which means we're endorsed. So we back all of your public dollars. We are one of the largest banks in this community that banks public funds. So we are, it's our niche, we're really good at it and we're really good with our customers and our community. The other thing I want to highlight is on page 11, we also have a program. We partnered with InterFi Financial and they allow us to take your funds and put them where they're covered by FDIC. So that's a very important issue for you as well. So that's an also additional tool that's available to you. And we've made some recommendations as well on that. And the other thing I want to highlight is what we do in our community. And I just have four quick points and then I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and open if you have, you have questions. There's four things that we think that are really crucial for the town of Fort White and we want to partner with you for these reasons. One is strengthening your financial access. We established an interactive teller machine in 2023, providing residents with convenient, secure, and extended hours to banking services because you do not have a bank in this area. And we recognize the need, so we came in. This that provided essential banking access to the residents of Fort White where there is no currently a local bank, ensuring convenient and secure financial services for everyone. We think that's very important. Two, community involvement and investment. Our commitment to the community extends beyond banking. We actively invest in local initiatives. As of today, we have contributed over $5,215 in community donations to the town of Fort White and your programs and the schools. And that's very important. You need that. We've given over $5,215. These contributions, they reflect our belief in reinvesting directly into the people and priorities of this town. We, you have a vision and we want to grow with you. Looking ahead, we plan to expand our impact through our community grants. First Federal has a foundation grant program. We've already discussed that with the mayor. And high school scholarships, and we're working on that too. Further supporting education and local development. In addition, we offer the ability to connect local organizations, so Main Street, that organization that was just talking, we have a way to connect them to other grant funds. We have a network with those and we want to help you expand that. The third point, financial literacy and career readiness. We've taught free financial literacy workshops for youth, family, and seniors to promote informed money management and long-term financial health. So at the Columbia County Senior Services, at the high school, at the middle school, which they're the same, but, and at the elementary school, we've been in your classroom teaching your students in this area. We partner with local schools and organizations to participate in college and career fairs, introducing students to the opportunities in the financial sector and helping prepare them for future success. And looking forward, we are committed to expanding these programs with new partnerships and enhanced content, creating continued opportunities for growth in financial literacy and career readiness across all age groups. And my fourth point is local partnerships. We will continue to work hand-in-hand with schools, nonprofits, small businesses to ensure our programs and services are tailored to local needs. Our goal is to be a responsive and reliable community partner, not just a financial service provider. We really believe in our communities that we serve in. I'm going to turn that over to Sarah so she can talk a little bit about our electronic banking and we'll wrap it up.
Hi. My name is Sarah Libby. I have been with First Federal for nine years. All nine of those years have been in corporate services. I work for Chris Stalvey. He is the lead of our department. There's four of us that work. Everything as far as our corporate services, which is our business online service, is done in-house. If ever your phone call doesn't go out, you speak to someone when you call in and you have our number, you speak with someone at the bank. We do offer that. You guys are interested in, since there is no branch here, being able to make your deposits remotely, we offer that machine. We have someone that will come in and install that machine here for you personally. And then also too, we have the dedicated people in our staff. If you need help with that machine during business hours, you can call on the line. And then also, Chris is available after hours. So if something happens and you can't get somebody on the phone, you will have Chris's cell phone and be able to reach him after hours if something goes wrong with that machine. We will come out and do maintenance on the machine if something is needed. We also offer our ACH origination as well as positive pay that was discussed, online wires. And the nice thing about our ePort online services is it is a completely customizable online banking experience. So as you see, you've got different people that may need to see certain things and some people may need to see this account, but you may not need them to see this account. We're able to break down these services and give someone as little or as much access to the accounts and the different services that you sign up for as you direct and assign your work for. Last thing, sorry, I did forget. On the remote deposit capture machine, that is the same as the Seacoast was as well. We do allow you to make those deposits. Our cutoff is 7:00 PM for the next day deposit, but you can still make those deposits after hours. You're not limited to the banking hours.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think she might tell me when I'm going to say this, but Sarah is a graduate of Fort White High School. So we have really strong roots in this community.
I did grow up in this community.
It is wonderful. Yeah. So I thank you for your time. I don't know if there's any questions that you want to ask.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this offering, but I don't want to accept it. Can you just pass it out to the citizens here?
Anybody you want.
Right, if you want to pass that out, feel free to. I mean, just for ethical reasons, but I don't want to accept it.
I apologize. I didn't even think about hats.
But I appreciate it. It was a nice gesture.
You could just leave them right here and just on the table and then take them home.
Yeah, anybody who wants to come up and help.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But yeah, thank you. Very informative presentation. And I like the fact that you can separate accounts, but base our interest on the whole ball of accounts.
Yes, sir.
I know you mentioned grant, money, et cetera, but I think we also have gas taxes, fuel taxes that have to be used for transportation-related issues, stuff like that. So that would have to be in its own account. So I really, I really like that.
Correct, that's correct. Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there a way to, as built in the Seacoast program, to offset the fees that are-
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same setup. It's the exact same setup. It's going to offset those fees and then just the credit you have interest.
Oh, let me, actually wait. No, I think you have the fees in here in that page.
Right.
16? Okay. Okay.
No, that is a generic T-shirt that you're looking at there.
Okay.
Okay, that's not your analysis charge.
Okay.
If you go back to page eight.
Page eight.
It's, your analysis charge with First Federal will be 11320. Uh huh. That's correct.
And then we would get the 1.73?
Yes, that's correct.
Which is where?
It's about $1,200 a month.
About $1,000. Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
That's so small, right?
Lefayet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I believe you've got a copy of proposal. This is Tiffany Bevel. My name is Brent Williams. We're going to Lefayet State Bank. Thank you for having us tonight. We have a proposal for you. Before we go over that, I'm going to share a little bit about the bank. The bank was established in the 1940s. It's been around for approximately 80 years. We have four branches. We are as local as it gets around here. We're based out of Maia. We have branches in Brantford, Belle, and Live Oak as well. I recently went to work for Lefayet State Bank and we're opening a loan production office in Lake City. I have previous history with the town. When I was at Seacoast, I banked them, you guys. And prior to that, I was earlier president at Drummond Bank when we established the branch here in Fort White. So I enjoy working with the town. The values of the bank, I think closely match the town as a whole, being in a small community, in a small bank. You as a customer mean more to us, just because you're more important to the livelihood of the employees and the bank itself. In regards to the organizational structure, it's a very flat structure. We report to the bank president, basically. And you know, if you have any concerns or needs, it comes up to the top of the food chain pretty quickly. Because of that flat organizational structure as well, they tend to keep it kind of simple on the deposit side, as simple as we can. So in that proposal you see there, in regards to your operating checking account, all of your monthly service charges, there are none. And any of the advanced services, as far as the remote deposit capture, ACHs, wires, all of those same services that have been discussed, we do offer those and those are complimentary. So you do not have any service-related charges. We establish how many ever accounts you need. And as far as the interest you earn, we like to pay you 3% on those monies that you keep in a money market account. And you could establish multiple money market accounts as well. So hypothetically, just to give you a number, you know, you keep approximately a million dollars in the bank, give or take. If you keep 500,000 in an account at 3%, it's about $1,250 per month that you would earn.
And on the other 500, what is it, one half?
No, no, there would be no interest earned on that portion. But on the 500, it depends on what you keep in the money markets. But 3% for whatever resides in the money market per month. Your first order of checks are complimentary as well. And you know, I've worked with you before. I'd love to work with you again. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
I think we have opened it up for everybody.
I have a question. So just using your example of keeping 500,000 in a non-interest-bearing account, 500, can money be moved back and forth between accounts at any time?
Absolutely, yes. Through online banking, the clerks would be able to transfer it, or whoever transfers it during the daily operations at their leisure.
The reason I ask, I don't really see the purpose or the need to keep 500,000 in a non-interest-bearing account if they could move it to the checking account at any time and then write the check immediately, so.
That's the idea. You keep your operating funds in an operating checking account. And any of the extra that you don't intend to use for, say they make a weekly transfer, you know, we're going to spend this much money this week, we're going to keep the rest in the money market or whatever it may be. However, y'all decide.
I would like to add or make a correction. We do have an interest-bearing checking account that you can utilize for your operational expenses, which is the one and a half percent that you were referencing.
So, okay, so half, if we keep it kept in the money market, it would be 3%. The other half would be the one and a half percent?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Tiffany. This is my mom, Tiffany.
Okay, thank, questions? You got one more after that?
One more thing I'd like to add. Brent did a very good job, but you know, our core values are really strong with family, community integrity. And you know, we are so local that we have to provide the utmost customer experience. So a lot of times, we do extend our cell phones for late-night calls, emergencies, things like that. And you know, you call, you're going to answer, you're going to get an answer from somebody within our four local branches, so.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. And we've got the final offering here from Campus, I believe. You guys, somebody said you all.
You're good, mom.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, council members, community members, and fellow bankers. My name is Arianna Mardis-Jones. I am the Service Center Manager of Campus USA Credit Union in Alachua. I have with me here Hannah Kastner, who is our Head Teller, and also a local community member of Fort White. So I really appreciate you guys inviting us to be here and the opportunity to share who we are, what we do, how we add value, and how we can support your financial needs. So Campus USA, we do have a mission and vision. Our mission is to be the leader in the markets that we serve by providing exemplary service and exceptional value to our members. Our vision is to empower employees to make a positive difference in the financial lives of our members and in those communities that we serve. We want to be the financial institution that our members choose first, use the most, and grow with throughout their lives. Our pillars are members, employees, and then community. We firmly believe that if we take care of our employees, that they will take care of our members and we're extremely involved and dedicated to our communities. We were founded originally in 1935 on UF campus. So John Wayne Wright, you may recognize the name, actually went to a conference in a totally different state and learned about the idea of a credit union. So what I'm going to mention is, I'm going to, we're going to seem like the odd man out because we operate very differently from banks. So I'll share a little more about that. But basically, he came back to the university and said, you know, to his colleagues, we need to start this here. And basically, what they did is they each took $5, put it into a pot, and the credit union was born, from $45. So we have now grown to be a $3.5 billion institution. And like I said, it's kind of amazing the growth that's taken place in 90 years. So we are a no-fee or low-fee financial service option with this account. When we met, we discussed that this would be a no-fee account. Campus's business is not to charge a bunch of fees. We're here to serve you and your needs and your community members. The best, we try to offer the best-of-market rates on deposits and loans. Because we are a non-for-profit co-op owned by our members, we're able to take those tax savings and turn it back into those higher dividend deposit rates and lower interest rates on loans. We give up a volunteer board of directors, so they're not, you know, paid to make decisions for the credit union. They're members just like you and me, which is a huge value to a lot of our members that we serve. And since our members own campus, we can never be bought, nor can we merge with another institution without our members' approval. So as far as stability goes, I think that's a huge value, especially when you're considering the responsibility of housing and taking care of public funds. In 90 years, we've only ever had three CEOs. This is Jerry Benton, our current CEO. We all love and respect him dearly. We have, again, over $3.5 billion in assets. We've never laid off employees due to economic downturn, which, as you may know, with what our country's been through in 90 years, that's actually pretty significant. We've maintained a capital ratio above 12% for the last 20 years. That, again, speaks to the responsibility of our board of directors and the top-level leaders we have in place who are making wise decisions for the credit union. And I would say, don't take our word for it. You can research us at our call report on the NCUA website, which is our federally insured regular. But I have that link provided there and all of you should have it as well. Our calling report number is six- Our calling report number is six eight three nine one. So as far as overall benefits, I did not present or bring a very comprehensive report. And we can so appreciate everything that everyone has brought before you tonight. Uh, we are kind of a little bit more like Lafayette Bank in that we kind of have it very simple. Um, we are state-chartered, so anyone in Columbia County can be a member of Campus. We have an institution in Lake City, which is directly in Columbia County. And then we, of course, are in Alachua, just twenty minutes that way, or maybe that way, I don't know. So, on both sides. We do have the remote deposit capture machines as well. A lot of our commercial clients use those. Um, they're very helpful. And again, we're here to serve you and assist you in every banking need that you have. This is actually my team. Um, we've since added a few faces and promoted some as well. Um, very proud of this team. They are wonderful. And when it comes to, uh, accessibility, this cellphone right here, it's a work and personal phone. There's no separate phone, so you can reach me pretty much at all hours. And then, uh, the bottom line is that we're willing to pay three percent on whatever you have deposited with Campus, uh, which should be more than double what you're earning currently under dollars. So we're there. Any questions?
Three percent on everything?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Um, and you have the ability to separate funds by category, separate?
Yes, sir, we absolutely do. So, much like, um, has been shared tonight, we can do kind of sub-shares. So you'll have an umbrella of an account number, and beneath that, you can add multiple shares uh, with different purposes, nicknames, it's customizable online. Um, customizable to, as far as access and permissions as well, you know, you can regulate that too.
And then, um, the three percent would be on each and every one of those categories, subcategories, and their minimum balance on each category?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One other question. Um, for the remote capture, is there any cost for the equipment?
No, there's not.
And then, uh, transaction per fee, per transaction?
No, again, I know it seems so simple, but we, that, that's just how we operate, so, yeah, no fee.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you, everyone. But now we'll open it up, um, what, or, I guess, council deliberation, we'll deliberate, we, what the, uh, sentiment is here, council.
Do we need to make the decision tonight?
I don't know, we have the need to make a decision.
I'm glad everybody else, if the council believes, who need to make a decision tonight or think about it?
I guess we have to make the decision tonight. We haven't made the time yet to vote it, so.
What do y'all think?
We have to.
I guess I will say, we, we can wait. The more we wait, the less interest we're getting of the money that we have. Animal fees we're gonna charge.
Does anybody have any thoughts on their preference?
I'd say we make the decision tonight, 'cause we pushed it off since, like, I think it was January. I'm just, I'm going to bake on the numbers. Campus says no fees, three percent flat rate, period, everything. That's an extra, what is, what is that, three percent, one base thirty thousand? Right menu for us.
That is an attractive offer.
We can wait for, uh, other council person to come back.
I think this is.
I'm, okay, so I'll, yes. Uh, maybe you'll make a motion that we switch our bank over to Campus Credit Union, assuming, again, obviously, of course, they will honor this. Three percent on all the money, no fee. Is there a second?
A second.
There you go. All of y'all say aye?
Aye.
Good job!
All of y'all say nay?
We're deliberating right here.
It could be a battle. Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For having us.
Very good.
She didn't say that twice.
But you know what? It is a small baby, bro. He looks, uh, like that's super scary. Yeah, it's so cute to be in, like, Sydney, like, it's a goodness. It's a small baby.
Let me say, okay, all right, let, let me. All right. And I'll backtrack, uh, for one second here on the agenda, because, and I totally forgot, for the Fourth of July, and I heard them talking about it in front of me, for the Fourth of July, uh, event. I know we'll have to do, um, a planning and zoning meeting and make a decision on what you're proposing. So I'll give you a quick, just a couple minutes if you wanna come up, state your name, and just, but basically, that's what, I mean, that's what it is. They just need to, we need to look at the, at the, and either approve their, uh, Fourth of July grant, or, or whatever they want. And I forgot to, they had asked, I forgot to do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't touched that.
You ladies go ahead.
Now, um, Dana is our coordinator for the, uh, Fourth of July event. So she knows most, all the logistics and info about it. This is a small map, yes it is. This is of Ellis Street. You know, Miss Maggie is from the, uh, the Ellis building right there, and it goes straight down to the curve of, of twenty-seventh. Um, so I'll let Dana take over for you.
Or did you want me to continue with it?
Um, I've gone over all of this with everyone except for, um, Councilman Merrick. Sorry, I haven't had the chance to sit down with you. I know Kelly sends out an email offering for me to go walk the route, the, the whole board. We did that with, um, with Cabinet Terry, we did that with, um, the mayor. Um, I had a nice phone call with, um, Councilman Harrell. And so y'all have a bit of an idea of what we're trying to do. So we initially wanted to, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said when I was passing it up. You already said this. We had initially asked the council for use of the soccer fields, um, and we have the insurance umbrella of this, of the town. And y'all were so wonderful and agreed. But then the Board of Main Street attended the Main Street Florida, what do you call it?
It was a conference.
Conference. And they, they were very adamant, this is about Main Street in Fort White. This isn't about over there on the soccer fields. And as much as it would be so much easier to have this over on the soccer fields, we need to try to do that, because that is our focus, is to try to showcase our beautiful downtown. We're working on getting beautiful. So the only thing that we can come up with is if we had it on the side street. We obviously can't do anything on twenty-seven or forty-seven. So our idea was to start in the vacant lots on the other side of the collective. There's actually two lots, a lot of us didn't know that. We, we all thought it was one. Um, and then come down Ellis, um, across forty-seven, keep going until we come to Mayor's Park. So here's the dilemma. We need to close Ellis for the safety of our guests, um, and our vendors. And so we're proposing, or we're asking, if we can close down Ellis at twenty-seven, and then we would have, uh, vendors all along Ellis. We'd have them in the vacant lots, uh, those two vacant lots next to the collective, all down Ellis. We'd have a crossing guard, um, help people safely get across forty-seven, continue to close down. And then we would, our final area would be at Mayor's Park, where we would have a kid zone, where we would have live music, hopefully. Um, I reached out to the high school to see if we could get the band there. Um, I'd love to have the drama club. I, I'd love to have everything Fort White. That's my vision personally, and they have to put up with me sometime. But, um, everything should be about Fort White. So we should be showcasing our children, our, our members who make crafts at home, or who grow plants, or, and, and they wanna share their, their love of all these things. We'd love to give them the opportunity to do that right here in our town and do it for an affordable price. So that was the other thing. So we have, our, our top priority now is getting permission so that we can make everything safe. Um, which, like I said, closing down, we would like to put up barriers, um, at forty-seven here, on, on both sides of forty-seven on Ellis, and then on, uh, twenty-seven, and then we could have traffic cones, um, on any cross streets. We tried to line everything up as far as safety for parking. Um, we've spoken to, we have not completely final, but the German restaurant, um, she would like to be a vendor. And so we're asking for, to use her area that, that the restaurant parking lot is, is parking. Um, it sounds like they're on board, and then she would be a vendor, we would not charge her. Um, you know, we're, we're working on a lot of things, so, uh, what else do we need to focus on?
We're having a young forum, if it's approved.
If it's approved. Uh, one of the things that, um, my daughter and I have been trying to do for a long time, and then they've also heard about this with Main Street, is a young entrepreneurs section. So kids, um, our local kids from our elementary, middle, high school, and also homeschool kids, obviously. Um, we would have a section for them. They would all be together. We could have somebody, a couple volunteers monitoring their safety. But this gives them a chance to see what it's like to start a business and what goes through. So we, there would be a nominal fee, ten dollars for, for the kids, for each booth. Um, and even for our residents, we're gonna, we would like to cut a discount for our local residents as far as being vendors, where they were charging, what was, uh, what were they just charging at Pioneer Days? I think it was like a hundred dollars. We're proposing to charge twenty-five dollars for vendors, vendors. But if you are three-two-zero-three-eight-zed code, you would charge, you would pay twenty, instead of twenty-five. So it's all about our community. And, um, Sydney has talked to the Sheriff's Off, Sheriff's Office, um, Councilman Hillary said he reached out to somebody too. But she talked to the Sheriff's Office, and they, they said that they could increase police presence, um.
They would not attend. Now, that's, uh, that's a huge fee, but, um, they will have a fine police presence, or a larger police presence.
The fee, what fee did they give you for police? Cause they offer a program, I think, for officers that are off-duty, they'll come in uniform, and you pay them about an hour and a half.
Oh, they should do, and they get paid a lot more to do that.
I did ask.
Uh, this one I can tell you. That's a lot more money.
I did ask, and it was, uh, fifty dollars an hour at a three-hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did ask if there was any kind of funding, or if they could help out, and he's like, not at this time.
They don't do it. Being married to a next police officer, yeah, they don't do that.
Okay, that will get it. Now, you go.
I, I live on forty-seven, and my main concern, and we talk about this, is that safety of, you know, you say you have a crossing guard.
Yeah, we, we, we would have.
People strategically watch that light, and they'll speed to make it through that light, you know, and it's right at a really bad spot. Logistically.
Well, we walked it back and forth recently, and I didn't find that problem, um, I, it's Fourth of July. Um, there, it could potentially be less traffic, there could potentially be more traffic, but we would have, um, at least one, if not more. It, which they just did at Pioneer Days. They had one person helping people cross, uh, Main Street, which was busy as all get-out with, uh, Saturday and Pioneer Days. And they, they had crossing guards with the best of them, and it worked out just perfect.
So you say, um, increase police pres, what does that mean? Like they'll, like, roll?
They'll, they'll have more in the area that will be more visible.
They'll, okay, so they'll do like a, some sort of patrol, so they'll be seeing?
Right, they'll just, they'll be more visible, they'll drive around more often, where they're, maybe we don't see them here very often. Um, they have said that they would, um, make sure they're in the area, that they're driving around a lot, yeah.
Okay, and you have the calls we asked, go ahead, we'll work.
There was a huge event years ago, um, and there were some problems related to that event, which I think the town put parameters in place that you had to have a certain amount of officers for crowd control and safety purposes. So you don't get the option of whether or not, you can afford it or not, you have to have it. There was like lawsuits and all types of things brought behind that incident.
So we feel that there's something in our, in our rules with the town?
I think there is. I don't know.
I would even say, even if there's not something in our rules, I think there should be a deputy there, but that goes to the next question I was gonna ask you.
Uh-huh.
Didn't you reach out to the tourist development board in Lake City?
Yes.
What'd they say?
And, uh, the only thing that they are willing to do is give us a ten-thousand-dollar reimbursement for advertisement.
No, for advertising. Three, I'm sorry. Free?
Three, three thousand, sorry, three thousand.
Oh, for advertising?
Yeah.
Uh, gotcha. And you have to spend it and then get reimbursed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got, you got, right, right. Um.
Well, that's the thing.
Okay.
And I, I'd use a penny of any.
So in, either way, we'll have to decide on a date of the planning and zoning. And I'll ask y'all for like your logistics, what you would prefer, and then we'll see what we can do. Go ahead, Councilman Harrell.
So, uh, I think we talked about a couple things, a little bit of that, uh, you were gonna look into. Um, A was the path, the tra, train, tra, the trail, whatever. Um, and I, I expressed my concern about, you know, blocking that. We can't block that, I don't think, because, uh, that's intended for pedestrian.
Alex is gonna step in on that one.
I spoke with Washington DC, uh, trails and rails and trails, and they told me that their trail managers manage their trails. I'm like, great, who's your trail manager? They're like, well, generally, it's the state park, sorry, called the state park. Uh, the state park says, well, what trail are you talking about? The Alina to Red Sox Trail. They're like, okay, well, you have to reach out to both parks, because they would be, they will be the trail managers. So I reached out to both of them, and they reached out to them as well, and, uh, they don't manage the trails. And this event is not impeding on the trail, because it's gonna be pedestrian. Uh, the, the pop-up tents that we're thinking are gonna be on private property on either side of the trail. So it's not like we're putting them in the middle of the trail, or we're putting them on the outskirts of the trail. So they don't have an issue, however, they don't even manage the trail management. So that's one of the things that, as a Main Street, we're thinking, well, maybe we'll take that on, and that'll be something for us to do is, one of our first projects is to kind of beautify the, the trail and actually take over that and maintain that, because parts of the trail in the town are kind of disrepair and kind of abandoned, overgrown a little bit, so. There's no trail manager right now.
So, so your response, uh, addresses what we talked about. I think you kind of indicated that some of the tents might want to set up on the path, which was my concern. If they're not on the path, I don't have a concern.
Well, I mean, if, if here's the path and here's the, you know, it's over just a tiny bit, sorry. Um, I, it's, we're still not impeding, there's still plenty of room, and, and it's going to be foot traffic anyhow.
Yeah.
Foot traffic rollers, that kind of a thing. I understand your concern.
I would prefer that they be off the edge of the path, because, I mean, the path is for pedestrian bicycle use, you know. So I don't have a problem at all, as long as those booths. So I don't have a problem at all, as long as those booths are off the edge of the path and people are walking back and forth.
Okay.
So technically, if you're filing a permit to close that portion of the street, there's no issue with impeding on the path.
Exactly, and that's what I.
It's town, it's town properties, yeah, it's town property, so if we say you can use it for those, for that, then you can, if, if we say that.
Right. So here's our quandary that.
Yeah, you could, cause the street, the permit will close that street off for their use.
Well, it will, it will close off Ellis. Ellis is the actual street. But it runs parallel to, but he's talking about the actual trail. Yeah, if, if the vendors are set up on the outside of the trail, then there's no problem with anybody impeding on the actual trail. And if that was his question, we're fine. Because no one's gonna be on the trail other than pedestrians using it from vendor to vendor.
Using, using it.
So I understand. Planning zoning and everything, but we need, like.
So that's my question for, for y'all. And that's my question, yes, so I, I, I'm gonna.
So what?
When is it that you would?
Nine o'clock tonight?
Yeah.
They've got to start advertising.
We can ask, we can, we can see, we can do one, uh, next week? If y'all, just, just only a planning and zoning, only for this. But I wanna ask council what, you know, what we can do or as part of the commission, you know.
Can't be just planning zoning board, planning zoning board has to approve things to town council to approve. Planning zoning board doesn't have authority. You have to recommend that to your town council. So it's not just one meeting.
Wait.
It's a one-time slot though.
Wait, 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 cause.
If you're gonna have a planning zoning board, the planning zoning board is gonna need to determine whether you can do that and then you have to have a town council meeting to approve that.
Wait, but every, every special needs permit that we've approved, you approve out of the town council. No, that's at the plan.
Planning and zoning board has given their recommendation and the town council has approved it. We can have these two meetings.
Well, we'll, we'll verify, we'll ensure we get it right procedurally, but.
My question is, one more time, about insurance.
We will have to get it back.
Y'all won Fort White, the city that got there for this, and I don't think that they should.
Yeah, we will have to get it back.
I'm sorry, but. We gotta see you during the event, while back, I thought we, because, I wasn't on the board. The next up, that guy got burnt, the guy got burnt, sued cities, won the money, because the people weren't carrying insurance.
At an, at an event at the other park?
At the B-Bank.
The B-Bank is where it happened.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it got out of control quick.
Yeah, we, we actually are in a time slot that is low. Low violence, it's only, it's only ten to three?
Nine.
Nine to three, I'm sorry, nine to three. So typically, those are low violence.
No, it wasn't a violence.
It's just not, I mean, everything. So lack of crowd control is basically what it was. You could have a vaccine work, but lack of crowd control is.
Right, we plan on having block volunteers, like block volunteers, and those blocks are very small.
I, I, and as, as you're kind of hearing, I do think it would alleviate a lot of concerns that just having that, you know, having a police presence there.
There's gotta be someone at that.
I, I see. Once again, I think there is some type of resolution. I know this is of essence, but there's some type of resolution about these events. So, and I think, I don't know if that comes from talking with the previous attorney or whatever, but there was stipulation set in place for anybody holding events, like you have to have so many deputies for so many, however many people that you think. You have to have a certain amount of insurance, you say it's gonna be a thousand people, there's a certain amount of insurance. It's written somewhere and I knew it was because I was involved in these meetings and the stipulations. And that's why the event never occurred again because it was gonna cost so much for her to have it with these stipulations in place. So I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have to abide by that if it's there.
So one, one thing I wanna mention though, when we passed the resolution for the food truck ordinance, when it was a town hosted event, you guys pinned that resolution and I, I have to double check it again. I think you guys waived some of the requirements for a food truck. Like if you were gonna have food trucks at one of the parks, you're gonna have a food truck brand also, they no longer have to purchase a seventy-five dollar business tax license. They didn't have to provide certain things, but that's in your food truck ordinance that just passed. And, and, and it's, that could be vague, but on there, there is a, a stipulation for special events and that might be somewhere to start looking.
And the town has to.
The town has, which if we were gonna do it at the, the community center, it was gonna be where the town was hosting it and then we would fall under your umbrella. But now that we're not doing it at the community center, what we're doing now on here, I guess the insurance is gonna be the way to go.
So once again, if the town is hosting it, falling back on Mr. Coon, are we liable again for another lawsuit if it happens?
The town's not hosting it, Main Street.
He said there is a stipulation where if the town hosted, that it's, it's waiting.
And, and we get that, we get that, I mean, we'll, we'll.
Like I, yeah, I mean, if we host it, we would probably just authorize or not authorize you guys to do it. But I, I do think, and the only reason I bring it up is because I had the sheriff, I had the sheriff call me, not, not about this, about something a few months ago and he was just like, hey, you know, there's some deputies out there, let me know, I'll, I'll keep you on, you on E. Cause it might, it might have been that same, but man, he said it was kind of outrageous, but, and, and that's what we don't wanna see. I think we want it to go fantastically, you know, so.
We have the possibility to.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess, long story short, as far as a meeting date, where this will be the only, I, you know, so not throwing a bunch of other stuff so we can focus on this, see if we can come to a resolution and give y'all as much lead time as you kind of need. What, what does the council think as far as a meeting next week or maybe early following, I mean, what, you know?
It needs to be as quick as Paseo so they can get their phone rolling.
Do you remember who you can talk to in law enforcement?
Twenty-second.
Um, he is the community outreach. Yeah, uh, starts with an M.
Okay.
That's what it is. That's what we did, yeah, for, for three hours, that we needed to be there. We did the prom after night, after dark for the kids.
Oh, what's the timeframe, I forgot to ask.
Nine to three.
Nine to three.
Was that six hours, six hours, okay. So before we vote on this, you.
I have a question for Mr. Pope. So there's been issues, concerns raised about the issue of crossing forty-seven. I mean, we're, we're gonna approve of them to put on the event, that they've offered to put a crossing guard there. Is there any liability on the town if they put an unqualified person there as a crossing guard? I mean, are we, okay, letting this happen with, are we better off to let people cross forty-seven on their own?
I think crossing guard probably be a better way to go, but if they're gonna get event insurance, that should be covered under their event insurance.
So is that crossing guard needing training, like?
Yeah, I mean, obviously higher, higher qualification crossing guard.
But they just have volunteers from the chamber doing it in high springs.
I mean, it would limit your liability if you have some money to train.
And I'm just saying, like, people that work for, you know, school crossing guard, DOT squads, you know, vehicle maintenance or something, you know, I'm talking about. They, they have a little training, this little class to go to, just to.
I got that, I'll do it.
Okay, I'll do it.
I mean, it's been ten years ago, but you know, it's still.
I, I, I accept that, thank you.
I hope you don't need a certification.
You tell us you have it, I'll take the word for it.
And so for here on the council, we can do, we can do it next, I mean, I guess we can do it next Thursday. But I wanna know everybody's schedules and.
What time is that state voting?
Uh, one-thirty.
One-thirty.
State should give it by four.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
You have to go with the counting meeting?
Yes.
At one-thirty?
I'm not here for talking without me. I vote yes.
Thank you.
You have pension. Okay, I mean, so yeah, so what do y'all want, I mean, we could do it that, could do it that Friday. If we do it that Friday, I would have to be out of here, we'd have to probably bump it up a little bit, because I'd have to be out of here by like, a little bit before sunset, so maybe seven-thirty. So we, so I'm just, I'm just saying options for y'all.
It's just a quick.
Do you mind missing the meeting?
No, I vote yes, I'm all for it, but I'm for a crossing guard and a deputy.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna do it Friday.
I do it Friday.
No, man, I'm going to town.
And he can't do it Friday, I don't know. But I'm happy to begin, I mean, I'm always here.
I mean, it's not gonna take a day.
Not Friday, I'm here Friday.
Yeah, someone's saying Friday, oh, you're Friday morning, and everybody's Friday morning.
So Friday's not.
I got y'all. But I don't have to be here with y'all for a man.
Still have somebody that we.
So I don't mind missing.
So either way.
Y'all can do it Friday, because I can do it anytime Friday.
Yeah, Friday, you can do it anytime Friday.
So Friday.
I mean, this is, it's gonna take two meetings, you know that.
Well, and we're gonna verify.
Back to back.
If we gotta do that one.
We gotta do that, I know that.
That's it, that's how we do it.
We give our recommendations to the board, then the board makes the decision, that's how it works.
And you're also saying pretty big.
Exactly.
Uh, Friday, yeah, we'll see what happens, go before, we said you wanna say one.
Yeah, what would be, I kinda walked in at the end of this question. So the purpose that I mean would be for what?
To, to approve.
Your permit.
Yeah, to approve your guys'.
And, and that's a condition on what?
I personally, I can't think of more, but I personally think that if y'all have a deputy presence.
Put all this aside now.
So, so can we say that you approve a condition on others having event insurance and deputy presence and a crossing? So can we approve that now?
I don't know if those are the only conditions, if there's a resolution on, on the prior things, so.
We talked about anticipating Maggie's being open?
Yes, she says she, she'll, she should be open by July.
And that's great, but out of courtesy, and this is just my thoughts, out of courtesy, I wouldn't have any food vendors.
Oh, no, 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 we would not, we would not do that, no, we've already discussed that, yeah. I'm heavy. We, we think alike, but I'm still heavy, again, again, just saying.
And I, I don't know if you mentioned it when you talked to the sheriff department, but they used to have an auxiliary and they used to patrol like the fair. I don't, I don't know if they still have that, but I mean, you might be able to plead.
That probably doesn't fall under your, your guidelines of wanting to have an off-duty police officer though. And that, you cannot get a deal, that doesn't happen, it goes through.
And he was.
Or whatever.
I hit on that phone if they're certified or authorized, and I mean, we're so.
Again, I'm saying. Married to a police officer, they don't, that's, it's all, yeah.
So he was very adamant in telling me that Lake City, Fourth of July is around the lake.
Yeah.
Lake City, Fourth of July is around the lake, so I.
Yeah, that's Lake City, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I thought it was at the fairgrounds now.
It is.
Yeah. Okay, what time do we, some of the time for Fridays, uh.
Getting the clothes, even even by the door, y'all do it.
Yeah, wait, you.
You're up, I'm up, I'm good with it.
We're not trying to delay y'all since.
I guess we can.
No, we know that, but you just kind of catch out of that.
Only time, only time for y'all to be here earlier is at four-thirty.
So.
Other than that, y'all can go ahead and have it.
Okay, so what time, for, for a morning time, we wanna wait till, maybe do like. So that's, oh yeah, that's right, he might be the, I, I might, you might be the.
Logistically, there is another option. They can walk down to the crossroads right here, you know, and walk across and then come back down or go straight across on the sidewalks on the front.
You're gonna have people running across that road, you don't have someone there.
I, they do have a walk sign, a red sign, I mean, that's a little bit extra, oh, there's not gonna be there?
No, I'm saying if you're, if you don't have a physical presence there, people are gonna be running across that.
I know, and I plan on doing that, but I'm just saying that extra caution of walk sign, you know, caution sign, whatever, the red stop.
But we'll be on, okay. So Friday, four-thirty? Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll go ahead and work, so I make a motion that May, I think, I think, well, I'll be here now. May, yeah, May twenty-third, we have a planning and zoning meeting and then also if necessary, right after, we'll have a town council meeting to consider the Main Street programs for. At, oh, at four-thirty? At four-thirty. Friday, May twenty-third, is there a second? All of y'all, is I? I, I'm holding my name.
I'm not going out, I just can't say it anymore.
That resolution. That is probably in terms of the legal settlement, settlement, person did that for.
I think so.
To prevent, you know. And it was years ago, but the sheriff didn't call you about it, it was years ago.
No, 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 but this current sheriff also called me about, there was another event that they were gonna have in Johnny and Brian. Okay, all right. Item number three, we're a third of the way done. We have to. Yeah, so now, yes, selective vendor for the sidewalk bit. So this is for the CDDG grant, uh, side rail project that we have. It should be relatively easy, we only have one bid. And we have Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey here, if you wanna very quickly, just, but yeah, I mean, he also only got one bid. The North Ford Professional Services, they're an engineer, they reviewed the bid, they recommended the bid, we just have to approve it, but. This is for, I will let you say.
This, uh, my name's Tony, I'm the project manager for the North Ford Professional Services. But this is for Horton Street and a portion down Cook. The Horton portion is from the school to the ninth degree turn where the cemetery is.
Okay.
And then Cook is from the school to, I believe, the entrance to the baseball field.
Did you email me the map? You showed me the map.
Show you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I have it in my mind, but they wanted.
Yeah, I don't care, you know, to me, I'll show you the map, but I'm, I'm gonna get that to you. But I'm, I'm basically just here for, I, we recommend, uh, the award to CDN Contracting. And I'm just here to answer any questions of councilman.
You have experience with them?
Uh, no, I do not, this, uh, but we, with this type of work, we don't see any issue with awarding it to them. With them being the only bidder as well.
So you recommend, that's still a factor, they're the only bidder.
We're in the, in the little bit of research we were ready.
Okay, so you have research and you don't have any concern.
Did they give a proposed timeframe from the start, Mike?
I believe the contract time is a hundred and twenty days from the time that they're giving those to machine. They have a hundred and twenty days to complete it. More than likely, this length of project is not gonna take them that long. But scheduling for, for contracting companies, you know, you don't know when they're actually gonna be able to get their approvals out there. So, but they have a hundred and twenty days from the time they give a motion procedure.
Sounds good.
Yes, so I followed up with, with Andy on that just earlier and, so this grant amount was actually, is actually for just under a million dollars. But we changed, I don't know, the scope of the project changed because we got, uh, we were able to get funding through DOT and through like the lap agreement, which in matter of fact, might have been those ones we just approved previously. So we don't have to use all the grant money that we were given, so we're gonna be well, well under. Like they charge us a hundred ninety-two and we'll pay North Ford Professional a total of maybe a hundred or less or.
I think it's less, because our fee was reduced when we reduced the schedule based on the other.
But even if you call it that, let's just say it's.
It's well, everything together is well under y'all's grant.
Well under, like, less than half hundred. And with, cause I asked Andy about this, we can. And with, cause I asked Andy about this, we can't really use the remaining funds, cause I was trying to see if we, you know, but, but we can, so.
But you don't have anything to qualify us with?
Exactly. Uh, so, yeah, good question.
So I'll make the motion to move forward on this.
Okay, with CDN, uh, CDN contractor has the, uh, vendor for this project?
Yes.
Not good.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey, appreciate it, thank you. Uh, okay, Fort White Soccer Club wants to use the community center building, it's a medal ceremony, I guess they hand out their medals for the season, uh, Tuesday, May twentieth, and they're asking to waive, uh, the fee.
I'll make a motion to grant that use.
Make a motion, okay.
Well.
Did we check that, it's not booked down May twentieth, is it? Do we have a reason?
It's for them.
It is for them, okay, okay.
I would waive the fee, the rental fee and the, um, cleaning deposit, just the rental fee.
Yeah, they gotta pay the deposit, cause we, they need a mess. Not a good question, uh, one fifty?
Yes.
I second, I second that, you have motion, I second, uh, okay, so all in favor, wait, might be jumping the gun, any other questions on that? Okay, are all in favor of, uh, waiving the fee for the community center rental for the Fort White Soccer Club, May twentieth, say aye?
Yeah.
Aye, okay, all opposed, say nay. Alright, got that, number five, uh, for that grant, yes, there we go, Mr. Sanders, would you please?
That's taken from my fresh porch.
You are close.
Literally, does that change something?
Well, Mayor and council members, we have a product grant that you were awarded last year for a hundred thousand, and when it was awarded, we have three years to make improvements. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been putting together commencement documents to get the project started. One of the problems we ran into, the parks have been under city ownership for decades, but there's no boundary survey. That's been resolved, you now have a sealed certified boundary. So we sent that to Tallahassee, and we also sent, uh, cost budget estimates, and each of you should have a packet, after my presentation tonight, we're gonna make recommendations that you can decide if you like that, or if you wanna go through the catalogs that are on the mayor's desk. That took some time to do that. But let's look at Dees Park first, each park will receive fifty thousand dollars, now, when you look at the catalogs, you have to consider that the grant is based on primary facilities, there must be a Playstation, picnic tables, or park benches. And then there are support facilities as well, park lighting, project engineering, grant administration. So the first example I'm gonna give you is a Playstation by Little Tikes Commercial. They're familiar with Columbia County, they've done facilities for Fort White Elementary School. The other vendor we looked at was Playground Boss with a play structure like that, and then we looked at Game Time. The Game Time, all these vendors are out of state, but Game Time, uh, has current contracts of the county, we can piggyback on some of those contracts. And Game Time is offering hurricane specials, that is one of the delays, Hurricane Milton did quite a number on towns in Florida, and so vendors have been trying to help towns get improvements in their playground facilities. This is a park bench by Little Tikes, and this is a picnic seat table by Little Tikes, and this is a metal park bench by Playground Boss, and this is a metal picnic table. Again, all these are in the pamphlet that you can look at between now and the next meeting. Also, I wanted the council to be aware of Pride Enterprises, they are based at the Central County Correctional Facility. The facility has an inmate enterprise, they make picnic tables and park benches. So if you would like to use somebody local, and this gives inmates experience, we have used, Andy and I have used Pride Enterprises in Wildwood, and they do an excellent job of hand making.
Is it wooden, the Pride Enterprises?
Wood, uh-huh. This is an example of a yellow pine picnic table from Game Time, and this is a wood park bench by Game Time. And you'll notice we listed what the list is, what the freight will be and installation, all of these facilities will be done, the town doesn't have to put it together, these things are complex, you talk about, I don't know if anybody remembers secret toys, these things are well beyond that, it'd be very difficult to put it together. And this is something I want the town to consider, the budget calls for ten thousand dollars for park lighting, but if we put in a pole and have it, had a setup on the grid, that's about twenty-five hundred per light. Maybe the town would consider this, a totally battery operated light, where you have the light pole, you have double lamps for one thousand dollars. The batteries are very efficient, they're not replaced with every week, these are beautiful illuminations, and when I see this, I think how dark it is out at Johnny B Bryant right now, and even downtown from Dees Park, it's dark right now, if we went to this, and if you agree to that, we could put more lighting in on both parks, so that's something for you all to think about.
It's solar, solar charged?
It's battery, battery only.
Battery only, but how do you replace the batteries?
We recharge it, you probably get two batteries per light, while one's recharged and the other one's running.
So it'll take someone to go out there, replace the batteries?
Yeah, but, but it's not as frequent as you might think, they're really advanced batteries. You know, if we think about the lighting at ten thousand, it's gonna free up five thousand dollars, so maybe we can get a slide, the state will allow us to make additional purchases. And maybe we can put in some arch swings as well, both parks, as you know, are basically empty, especially Johnny B Bryant. As I mentioned before, when I first came to the town, and I, I was giving a look at your parks, there was a front-end loader holding up the basketball goal at Johnny B Bryant. So you, today, we're gonna change that, you're gonna get some fantastic parts, get things started. Okay, let's look at Johnny B Bryant, this will go faster, again, we have to consider a Playstation, picnic tables, we're going to renovate the pavilion for a thousand dollars as far as we can go, renovate the baseball field for a thousand dollars. The difference is, we wanna run a drinking fountain, we're gonna run a water, a pot of wine, all the way up to Johnny B Bryant.
There's already a drinking.
It, it, wherever it is, I don't know if it's in over to the park, but wherever it is, we'll pick up on it and set up a fountain at Johnny B Bryant.
Right, I guess if there is one, then we can make it.
There is one. There is a fountain there, cause I went there this week as a matter of fact, but it's not functioning, and I, I don't, I have no clue why it's not functioning.
Whatever it is, we can fix it, and also, in this budget for Johnny B Bryant, we'll be able to do two handicap accessible parking in concrete. And when I talk about a water fountain, it's gonna be simple, a chrome drinking fountain, but it's out there not, I forget what's out there now, but whatever it is, we'll upgrade it.
Question about the, uh, handicap parking, is that going to be lines painted on the existing slab down there?
No, there's no slab. There's no slab.
That's only a new slab.
It'll be a cord slab, and it'll be slightly marked.
Awesome.
I like that.
Also, that's unique for Johnny B Bryant, we'll have a park sign. And finally, to make this easier, cause I've thrown a lot of stuff at you and it's getting kinda late, you'll notice in the back of your package, here are the vendors. And right now, it looks, we're recommending that you go with Little Tikes as far as the play structure, the park bench, and the picnic, uh, seat tables. Uh, there is no freight charge if we use Little Tikes, but you're more than welcome to look at the catalogs, that took quite a while to go through them. We, once vendors find out you're interested, we started getting these in the mail, and coming back, they shan't, shan't own them, so we got them here tonight at the mayor's desk. But this gives you a snapshot of what we can do, uh, I told the clerk's office that any day now, we're gonna get a letter from the state saying we can commence and do this. And remember, everything in this grant, a hundred thousand, will be reimbursed. So far, we spent thirty-five hundred dollars, basically for Andy and I, and for the battery surveys, so the money's gonna start coming out. But after we have the playground equipment in, we go back to the people that did the surveys, and we'll have to do what is called a as-built survey, which clearly delineates what we've done, and send that to the state, once that's done, the city can be reversed fairly quickly, we might even try to do a direct closing, stand on check. So that's a lot of information I sent to you tonight, but, um, it, it looks good, both parks are gonna get some needed improvements. Are there any questions?
Yes, question for Mr. Sanders.
Okay.
Oh, we got, we got some questions, okay, I think I saw council member, the Harold's hand first.
The head, sorry.
Uh, so I personally like, uh, the brand Little Tikes, and I like the fact that they do free freight, so you actually.
If you guys wanna make a motion tonight, as soon as that letter comes in, I will, I will give the clerk's office the number, and, uh, these vendors have been calling me every week, since you'll notice these bids were done by phone in February, but the, the, the delay in getting all the documents ready, the, the city's in a much better position, if we do another grant, it's gonna be so much easier, we're gonna have, the deeds have been searched, and a title pending, and rendered, we got the boundary surveys, we really have upgraded a lot of files for the town.
Another thing, uh, is there warranties provided by each company?
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but, uh.
Pretty standard on these.
Yeah, like I said, they will come here, you will become sidewalks under maintenance, you watch it go up, and it's done.
I think Councilwoman Mary, she has a question.
All I wanna know is, is there any other roadblocks that we have to expect that you were not aware of, because we were made a promise that we would be seeing equipment and everything, it was supposed to be complete by this point.
Well, when we did the grant in August, I didn't know you had a new city hall, and I didn't know you were gonna have a hurricane in August, or in October, so I hope that's not gonna happen next year. But, Councilwoman, we're in a better position, a lot of the files that's gonna be required if you wanna do another grant are gonna be in place. And we know where the vendors are, and, uh.
So let me, let me add, whenever we do make a decision and move forward, I guess how, from the point that we made that decision, how long does it take from then to what we can, you know, start seeing?
I can't answer that right now, but I will know more, cause I'll be calling them back and saying the town is now ready, give us your bid, here's what we want, we want this, this, this. How much is it, when we will get here?
Okay, and then, and then that includes, and that would install in, and that would.
Right, and hopefully the county will, with this, we'll hopefully be aware of any permitting or inspection fees, hopefully.
Oh, so we might have to account for that too, okay. Okay, uh, and then Councilwoman Terry, I think, I think I saw your name.
I, I was just gonna say, um, I personally like this little Playground Boss thing, cause I kind of emphasize the material, the sturdiness of it.
Which was that?
Playground Boss thing.
Oh, this one here?
I think that first one, and I don't know, I'm just looking at the picture, I think that's for little, little people.
And we can source it on, we don't have to stay with one vendor through all the units.
This is my vote, that thing, and some of the prison-made picnic tables, cause the other, no, cause their quality, and the other ones are real hot, the metal, when it's all metal, it's real hot.
Those, wooden prison picnic tables, they're gonna need to be replaced within a couple of years, they're not doing it.
Yeah.
Extended.
And because, what'd you just say, somebody have to seal them? And we should seal it anyway, but, yeah, that's my vote, but I'm, I'm not gonna crap up.
I agree with Councilwoman Mary, some of the, uh, but metal, big fan.
Yeah, you're looking at sustainability and, and those, I mean, they're cheap.
Yeah.
How long it lasts.
Right.
Yeah, uh, okay, so I guess, I guess let's, let's see, um.
And the lighting, and how far that lighting?
Well, I would have more, more information on that, and, uh, I like this councilman's recommendation, maybe we can get a battery slice silver. We'll check into it, but I just thought it'd be so fast to get those lights in, uh, not have to worry about, who provides the light, the electric up here?
Duke replaces.
So we don't even have to, we don't even have to worry about Duke putting a pole on, putting up the lights, but these lights can be installed instantly.
I just want to see how fast the progress, we talked about all of these things, and what it'd be, and what, but we've seen nothing yet, so.
So to move forward from us, you need us to put together.
Yeah, what, what's your liking in those packets?
Right, and, and that's each category, and use all money.
Yeah, give, give the information to the clerk's office, they'll get contact free.
So there's, so there's, we gotta pick the Playstations, tables and benches, benches, and the lighting.
Right.
We pick those four for each part.
And then once we get the, because I did these polls back in February, and once I find out what the twenty-eight percent hurricane special is, that, then I can come back to you and say we can do some slides and swings.
Yeah.
Do we, okay, so what is, says the council, do we wanna pick some stuff now, do we wanna, well, yeah, what's it, council?
What was the last thing he said?
I, I was gonna recommend slapping it on next Friday's town council meeting, we have over, uh, one hundred, necessarily shotgun, you said, y'all.
Well, uh, I think that's gonna take some time to put items from each category together, um, we could, doesn't make someone to put a package together using the Little Tikes brand, then we could put another package together using, uh, the Playground Boss plan.
Or measure of things to be more, what, what's more cost efficient, what's more, it's gonna take time to just look at it and choose tonight.
Right.
And then, how long are, was the quote good for, it's been since February, how long was?
I'll, I'll get a recoup. I'll call him again.
Uh, I mean, I'm not trying to prolong it, but I don't think we can sit down here and in a charming manner throw these together.
That's one of the reasons why it, it took time going through those catalogs.
I suggest, my suggestion would be to put a package together with the Little Tikes, and then a package together for the Playground Boss, utilizing each category, and then we could vote to do one package from one brand for one park, and one package for another brand, or we could choose to go with one brand for both parks.
Or we could pick and choose, okay, so you said, you, who did you say, you said have a, appoint someone, or have the, I guess, what, what would you recommend someone have someone do, or have Doug do it?
What do y'all think, I mean, Doug could do that, but. And actually, just.
Yeah, tell me what you want.
Can we, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we, is this the one you like, can we just agree Doug's gonna select how many of those round tables that fit within that fifty thousand dollars? I'm looking at.
Yeah, I mean, those are ones I like better, I mean, I think there's a square option and a round option, I don't know which one is more costly than the other ones there.
I don't want something somebody's gonna carry off, and I don't know that we wanna put down cement pads.
Yes, yes.
Cause they have them.
And there's side prep too, we can choose, uh, mulch, different colored mulch in that, in that regard too, cause that would Johnny B Bryant and at Dees Park, there's no side prep whatsoever.
So, so, alright, so then let's, let's do, Councilwoman, let, let me know if this makes sense based on what I think I'm hearing from the, from the council. If you could put together for us a package for Johnny B Bryant, and a pack, like a recommended, you know, options for Dees Park, and for, and for each of those two, have two different sets of options for the Playstations, uh, sounds like for the picnic table and the benches, we're gonna go, I don't remember the brand, those green medals, whatever they're called, I'd call them green medals. Uh, and the park lane, present that to us, at the, and we'll notify you when the next meeting will be, and then we'll maybe.
Yeah, so basically, Mayor, what you're instructing me to do is upgrade this.
Basically, yeah, basically, cause that's, that was a good point she has, are the prices still the same, can, can we get, what, what are the discounts for those? Is there an online discount?
Online Playground Boss appears to be fifty percent off right now.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
So.
Jump on it.
So.
Does she get extra credit for doing that research, that way?
Good thing Little County.
Just trying to conserve.
That's a genre.
And she's talking about banking for the community. I just saw that, that's an example.
Can you put us together a package with uh?
Why don't we ask the council?
I'll do it. I'll put together some packages.
Okay, 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 all right.
Thank you.
I think we'll all, thank you all.
But you still have to get the update.
Once you tell me what you selected, it'll be updated.
Okay, so Mr. Sanders will work with Councilwoman Merrick's and we'll get, and then in that case, we'll give you some time. We can wait, I guess, if we do it June, the the June. The June, okay. Uh so I guess we'll.
Thank you.
Make a motion, so all right, so I make a motion to table this pending.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you all want me to select, like, do you want D's Park and Johnny B Bryant to have separate, separate PlayStations? So public has variety. We're gonna go to this park if we wanna play on this or that.
Cause cause worst case scenario, we could just say, hey, we like that, we like that spot apart, you know, whatever, whatever, yeah, yeah.
Can we go as far as say between the two of them, and this is gonna work on you, but they just get it done rather than have to come back here again? Cause I'm ready to see the truck backing up in there.
So you're saying you just authorize, so at that, so at that point, so we would just authorize Councilwoman Merrick's to 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 make this, to do that.
Are you good with that? If you're not, I'll do that.
You all are good with it, I'm good with it. But I wanna be on the chopping block now at the community center because I chose a green station that a red.
I'll be with you again, okay. I'm good with it as long as you do.
We're gonna all be in.
No, I was thinking, yeah, okay, I'm good with that, um.
For you, you're so.
So I I make a motion then that we allow uh Councilwoman Merrick to have whatever authority we need for approval for grant administration to spend the money. Working with um Doug Sanders, he'll work, I'm sure, also too with uh Carrie and Kelly. Uh to get this project started rolling yet. Uh is there, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all right, all of us say aye?
Aye.
I all of us say aye? Great suggestion, uh Councilwoman Terry.
Thank you for the vote, Council, and thank you for the reason.
And and I just wanna add, I know this has taken forever. And poor Doug, we nagged you to death about it, but this same grant is about to open again for the next year.
And I also, I, so back when I was, when I called the project manager of the state, since we are a ready, R E D I, a Rural Economic Development.
Initiative.
Initiative, since we have that designation. We can not only get uh fifty thousand per project.
You can get two hundred fifty.
We can, or, okay, he told me we can at least double that because of the designation that we have. So instead of getting fifty K per, we can get a hundred K per whatever project. And and it doesn't necessarily have to be the parks, like we might actually be able to, maybe even use some of that money for something else. I didn't get too deep into it, but.
And that's the one that's kinda open the bracket.
Well, it just so happens, Mayor, the next grant cycle is June first. So if you all want Andy and I get started, we can, we can get ready, not wait until June first. You go on from there. We we should have, we should have this done.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm leaving that.
See, we're in this, we're in this system.
Now we've been through the rough part.
The town has never participated in these.
Well, I wanna see some progress with this grant first before we agree with others, cause there's another, there's other options.
So let's wait till the June.
There's other options, so if we see progress, then we move forward with Andy, and if not, then.
Fair enough, fair enough.
We'll wait till, cause I think, and I don't think they're due until July.
Uh, end of August.
August, it might be fiscal year, anyway, yeah, so it doesn't have to be June first, okay.
And then, one more question. Uh so, so just to be fair to you, uh I remember in the meeting uh when the crowd was here, there was the discussion of the county doing it for us, you. There was a statement made that I can have progress in January. So you you were saying, I I think I heard you say that the reason that didn't happen is cause you had to have a survey of East Park.
Right.
That that was the whole of it.
Right.
Thank you. That's up to you.
And you know, therefore, while Kelly was by herself, but she was able to help us get these surveys through. And still did all the things that the town needs.
Yeah, and to be honest, I think Doug actually came to me uh at Marge. And we told him, hey, you know, Brooke had just left, it was just Kelly, and she was still working on the commencement documents. And that's the one that we just got back, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago from the law firm, was that one, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. Okay, the highway lighting maintenance agreement with F D O T, so we have a, we have a lighting agreement with them. Uh where we keep, we maintain the lighting along twenty-seven and forty-seven, I think, in the town limits, and they reimburse us annually. Uh and so, anyway, so every year we renew it, this year, we're not just under pretty much fifteen thousand, but they would reimburse us. I believe, if I remember correctly, typically we make money on this. Um I don't think it costs us the full fifteen thousand that we pay, uh or that they pay us, but. Anyway, it's an agreement that we have with the Department of Transportation and they, it's up for renewal.
I have a question.
Where they basically.
Um so, does this amount go up over a period of time? Is it adjusted for deflation or anything like that?
I don't know if it's adjusted for.
It has changed over the years.
Okay, cause uh you being a senior council member, you would know. Um I will say I had a conversation with Mr. Richardson, former councilman. Uh and and he mentioned that at one time the town, can you?
I'll talk to him and they said, oh yeah, we can raise that up a little bit, we got more money, just about one car.
Oh, just talk to him, okay.
Yeah, it was that, uh there was, it was the street lights.
We can do that.
The town used to get paid to maintain the bike trail. The edge it, weeding it, and stuff like that.
Okay, cause I, okay, yeah, I've spoken with her, I didn't, never dawned on me to ask her for more, yeah, okay. So we.
Tell you that we're gonna ask for more.
Yeah, she asked, and they they didn't even, I was like, well, yeah, we can give you more.
So can we, all right, can we, can we, or can we approve, maybe pending? We can approve it pending if we, you know, ask, that way, if it sets us a new agreement, that one will be approved for like, you know, whatever, eighteen thousand or whatever. We can do that, that we're gonna hold it up.
I'm just curious if we ever, you know, ask her, if they just offer.
It has changed, like Richard just said, I didn't know what caused it to change, but if she called and asked.
Her name is Katie Hughes.
If if she called and asked, that's right, I remember that.
And where.
I remember Katie Hughes.
She was like, Mark, roll it along.
Yeah, I recognize the name, I'm, now I get it.
Yeah, she wanted to lock the hopeless down.
That's what was said, anyway.
All right, all right, we ain't, we ain't doing, uh, and they can use us for money, really.
Don't hurt the ass.
Does not hurt to ask. I'll ask myself, I've gone back and forth with a couple vendors so far, but. Didn't dawn on me, okay, and we can do the same thing, actually, for uh some other agreement that will come due later, ask that too. Okay, um. Trying to think how to word this, uh. I guess the motion would be if uh approve this agreement pending, really, to see if F D O T will give us more money. I mean, they write that, that's so for shame.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and if they do give us more money than myself and the clerk consign, that for that renewed agreement with additional reimbursement. Okay, that's the motion, I think.
I second.
Okay, well, okay, all of us say aye?
Uh.
All of us say aye? Okay, okay, we'll do that. Good. Okay, the profit and loss statements, we got them here. So I will open it up to the council for questions, comments, concerns.
Um I reached out to um town clerk. And I asked about this, the rise in account because it stated commune burning and then the rest of it was cut off. So um I I reached out, heard she said that the public courts guys had those forms, and I have a question, just to mount. The whole council case, and it was need to get ahold of her for emergency, but I think that should be outdated, so actually, as the uh phones. And I I agree that they should have them, so I mean, the town will have them during the day.
Yeah, I think uh.
Yeah.
Update the, I think, I think that was just the uh, the cap holder names, so update those, yeah?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
The other thing I was looking at is the uh cleaning services for the community center. I was a little surprised at the cost of that.
Which, what page, so, what page?
Uh let's see, it's uh, what's the other, Glenn's?
Overland, yeah.
Glenn's floor pair.
What, what page is it?
Eight A.
Of the, of the D T U.
Is that a contract we have?
And there's another one, like, uh.
Is that a contract we have then, so is that uh?
I don't know if it's a contract, I know we use them and they agreed to do. Carrie, I get confused, help me out. Is it five hundred a month total? And and they come twice and they clean town hall twice, and they clean the community center twice. So a month for five hundred total, a month, yeah.
So we get two cleanings, town hall, two cleanings. Is that?
Community center.
Standard? I'm asking somebody that met that.
I had it, she wore, um I didn't agree with it. The town, town hall, you can get away with it. Um that amount was, it's, it was, it's the same. Um but it's, it's supposed to be every other week. Um but that facility is used every week. So I'm, I raised concerns because of COVID and all of that, and and not being cleaned after each rental. But we're charging the same fee for people to rent, and it's not being cleaned appropriately. Um but that has been the fee forever, and I had it, what, three years ago?
No chance to get it lowered.
No, no. Yeah, five hundred is low, because there was a company, before I think Surf Pro, and they was on like six hundred dollars per clean.
Yeah, easy.
So, yeah, and it is, it is now services outside, I don't know if they're maintaining the floors and there's an additional amount, like when they need to be waxed, which was like.
I don't remember if it's semi-annually or annually, they'll do like a deep clean and a wax and et cetera, and that, that is extra, that is extra.
Yeah, but there's no, yeah, that, that's very low, that's on the low end.
Yeah, cause I remember, I was talking about it with Kelly, and we're like, oh, we're gonna present to the council, and then we started looking at it, and we're like, actually, let's just keep our all quiet, cause five hundred's not that bad.
I love the comment, I'll say, is that on page two, uh the big obvious thing that I see is net income, negative thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. The whole town is looking, looking money.
Yep.
Well, that goes back to we keep saying we're on reserves.
Right.
So let me, let me clarify that, but I'll wait, that's the, um, literally, uh.
I'll just stay.
Page two, yeah.
Yes, so, and I think uh Mr. Vega has mentioned it before, so we don't get like an income, like the town of Fort Worth works for a corporation and we get ten thousand a month.
Right.
We'll get, like, for example, right now, Carrie's working on grant reimbursements for, so it's money that we spend. But based on, you know, submitting the paperwork and getting it, we're probably gonna get back, and then, well, I don't know, whatever they, whatever the state pays us. Thirty plus at least, there's another, so I mean, you know, there's gonna be months where it's red, there's gonna be months where, like, if we get a huge reimbursement, we're gonna say, wow, we beat twenty thousand.
This is the, this has been the best presentation so far from, I've, I've been requesting for months, and I know you've requested for months. And we understand, thank you, this, and we understand that the dollars will fluctuate. But this still should be in front of us every month.
Yeah, I, and I think we resolve to do a monthly one, like, not a detailed one, but at least just a general one. Uh but I mean, I guess we can do a detail, she just pulls it, pulls it, takes her whatever, that's fine, that's fine. It's not, it's not a huge lift on her.
Back to his question on saving the city money on the cleaning, it can't, the city can't be saving money. So all the other community centers in Columbia County, which the county owns and operates, all the other ones. They have a built-in cleaning fee that is not refundable. So you pay that to the cleaner to come in and clean after each rental. And that's how every other community center is operated in Columbia County, that the county, um um, you could talk to Ms. Flossy. Mister, uh, what's the county commissioner, Ron Williams, that does the one in Windfield. You get, uh, the price is included in the rental fee, and you don't get that back. That cleaning fee goes directly to the cleaning company. You're responsible for taking your trash out, sweeping the floors, but everything else is done by the cleaning company. And then that way, the the count, the city is not paying a cleaning service.
That's something.
Reimbursed, yeah.
That makes sense, like if you do a vacation stay.
Yeah, I presented that before, so it's not in, they were like, no, we're just gonna pay the cleaning fee, but I was like, it's not being cleaned after each use, so.
Exactly. Okay, I mean, should, should uh we compare? Uh have maybe the assistant town clerk call all the community center overseers and compare their fee, their rental fee and their cleaning fee? And then see if we need to address that for the town? Cause I think that should be.
Like their fee, what do you say, like their fee structure?
I know, most of them don't have a fee. Most of them, you can reserve it.
Really?
For sure.
Which one?
One in Lulu, the one in uh Dupree.
Oh, Windfield and uh all the other ones there. I I know the one that Ms. Flossy does, West Side.
They've got a.
It's like six hundred dollars.
Well, we can call and see.
Yeah, what's this?
They've got a group that runs all them. It's not like Columbia County handles it.
Right.
So which ones, like you're saying, cause I wanted to get a good.
County, they're not the county-based ones?
The county owns them, but they, the group, the communities run them, and a lot of them, you can just go in there and say, hey, I wanna check this date. I mean, I don't say, I don't say they don't wanna pay a fee to be now, but, but they don't, it's not running, not the one in full hours.
Yeah, and I wasn't here for the, I know there was like a fee, they were supposedly gonna change the fees or something. Um I mean, we, I think that we do make money on the community center.
We do.
Uh it is a source of revenue for us, but I I think there was a pushback, like, for potentially doing that, just like from the community members, like, hey, it's, it's expensive to rent this, like. The other thing I heard too is people who rent it for a half day and people who rent it for a full day, they both pay the same fee. So then it's like, hey, I've been there for two half, you know, but so anyway, it, that's the other side of that story, that's what I was.
Right, but without making any recommended change at this point, can we just?
Call around.
Call around and see so we can compare what the other community centers.
Are doing and what they're.
For rental and cleaning.
I, I was gonna ask you that. Just everyone on the council wanna volunteer to take that?
Can we get the assistant town clerk?
We can, we can get here and do anything we want, but I'm just, just.
Yeah.
Part of the job, okay, uh Kelly, you got that?
Yep.
All right.
You're on me, girl.
Thank you.
See, there's a convenience.
That's the profit and loss. Oh, okay, so anything else on the profit and loss statements?
It looks good.
Yeah, it does.
I like the same week mostly.
We give that, we give that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now, uh item A, the twenty-twenty-one, two fifteen.
That would be me.
Right, okay, yes.
All right, I found this resolution. This resolution was put in effect during COVID. This, this gives the city or town a way that they can keep running if we couldn't meet. I think this thing ought to be killed. I think we're gonna change the resolution, cause this gives too much authority on too much spending on money. That the council should be the one determining how much money's spent and on what.
So right now it gives authority to the clerk?
Clerk and the mayor. Just pin, just pin a lot of money, if you look good, for a small town like a lot.
So you want to amend this or to?
I want to, I want to change or make a new resolution, I guess.
Okay.
That 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 kills this one. However, we do that, I don't know.
So it'll be, so we, so we would just amend, yeah, okay, so.
I would like to put it back to what the charter says. And not have, where you can purchase access to twenty-five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars.
Do you know what the original resolution was for in the?
This is the resolution right here.
I mean, the um.
The charter, I don't know exactly, the, I looked in the charter, and I cannot find the exact amount. But it's closer to five hundred dollars. but it's closer to five hundred dollars without going in front of the council than it is five and, five thousand, ten thousand dollars. I don't think there's nothing, no reason that we can't meet within eight hours for something that we need to spend money on.
Yeah, and so, and, and we can do that, I'm gonna give the flip, so the flip side to that is, and I, and I had this happen. Uh, you know, we had a meeting about it, that thing about the water plant, uh, and the well collapsed. And the guys came in right here in town hall and they're like, hey, the well has collapsed, it's gonna come, what do you wanna do? So if I didn't, you know, had I made the decision that I had made and I didn't have justification for this, I would have been in a situation where it's like, screw it, let the well collapse. You, so, that's, that's okay, I don't, hey, this, this less work for me, this less stressful.
Exactly.
But just, but just understand, in a situation like that, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at and then also some of the day-to-day stuff. You know, the public works guys all the time, hey, this busted, hey, that busted, Carrie will call me, hey, Mayor D. So we're not gonna be having, you know, two meetings a week for a few hundred, un, unless you say so, I, listen, hey, it's less.
We can, we can put a price on it, but I am not agreeing if we can cancel this. I'm not agreeing for somebody to spend a thousand or five thousand dollars or five thousand or ten thousand, I'm, I'm looking at this now and that's just not feasible for a town this size.
I just have one question about that, you said, so, and, and that was an emergency, I mean, that's not a COVID year, right?
Well.
Yeah, it is.
Is it, yeah, or is it?
That's kind of minded, didn't know how you read it.
Well, that's one last one.
We was pumping water, but one well was down.
Right, right.
So.
Hold on, I don't know what this.
That's what I'm saying, if you do a label, it doesn't weigh with that, there ain't no second thought guessing. You call and have a meeting and we decide. I know what that authority.
It's whatever y'all, whatever y'all wanna do.
Cause I mean, if there's no emergency exception in here, which I'm just scanning, I don't see that.
There is a, yeah, probably says something, but.
This is not, I don't know if this is the latest one, cause I have.
Five different people and get five different answers on that.
Yeah, hold on, let me find the other one there.
It's in there, it says, uh, in case of emergencies, the town clerk with the mayor can uh, expend a certain amount of, uh, approve expenditures.
Now, now, even in the case of an emergency, how it's written, it has to be brought up to the town council within.
At their next meeting.
A certain time, yeah.
And that didn't happen.
That didn't happen, but so there's another exception.
There's two exceptions in there.
There's another exception for repairs.
Mm-hmm.
So, but yeah, just hey, whatever the council wants to do, I would just say, just understand in a situation where it's a bona fide emergency or we have equipment down or we have a computer goes down or we have it, it surpasses that one thousand dollar. You know, I guess I'm just saying, keep both sides of the equation in mind, I don't care, you could say, hey, I, I can't spend a buck, that's easy for me. But I'm just saying, so I'm not trying to grab power or hold on to power, I, from the bottom of my heart, don't care.
Uh, do you have like the most of the data?
Yeah.
Cause if that's uh, the tip, then we don't need to look at this one anymore.
What is the comment, what, what, during your time, what have you encountered that like the public works need like busted pipes or whatever, like the cost that you approved the most, has it been over a thousand?
The most, I think, might have been the ace, and, and mind you, this is like, so now the clerk can approve up to, you know, whatever, but went back or whatever wasn't. I think the AC went out, no, that might not even, that might have been four hundred. The, the main one I can think of is the water plant one, and there was one other one that I'm not remembering right now. Oh, the accountant, whenever, whenever one left and the accountant did the contract and it was twelve hundred a month and Brooke or Kelly did not know how to use quitbooks. And they were about to start and we're just like, okay, we're either not gonna pay people or we're gonna approve an accountant and the next town council meeting wasn't until whatever, I said, hey, I'm authorized on this. But that was twelve hundred, but technically it was over, I think, like the one thousand, the clerk, but the clerk, we didn't have a clerk anyway, so. That's the only time that I can recall, um, so I mean, I think I've only used it twice and, and in my opinion, they've been bona fide emergencies. But, hey, like I say, you know. And, and uh, there, there is, there is, there is another.
Well, I was just asking if the, if we're looking at the new, newer one, then, you know, we can discuss limits.
We've had this conversation several times where the limits, now I don't know the exact details, but they were changed either when Donald Cook was so sick or when COVID hit. And the former mayor was pretty much running the show. Cause there wasn't face, face contact or there wasn't quarrel, but I agree that there needs to be limits.
So we just need to basically agree on limiting.
So just update this, so just update this. This might be the one, this one's signed, I think.
What is that?
Uh, I just pulled.
Can you print that out?
Uh, yeah, I can have it emailed to you.
You just pulled that forward, sorry.
It wasn't in, it was a, uh, like an old resolutions binder that we have historical logs or whatever.
Oh.
And it says it was in it. Can you make a note, please, that we sent, uh, the entire council? Have you filed it tomorrow, uh, the updated purchasing policy?
I'm really gonna embarrass myself.
I, I, I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm still trying to understand the, um, mayor week structure that we have and mayor week in a flattering title, but that's, that's the title, correct?
The, the system of government, a weak mayor as opposed to a strong mayor?
Yes, not mayor.
I think it's like a hybrid, because we, we do have some resolutions and organizations that do give me some additional like, emergency expenditure, so it's, it's like a.
Can we perhaps, we, we look at, and if we're gonna set limits, we need another.
I'm, I'm gonna, I know, I can't print from this computer, this is like my PC and I can't connect to that, I try. Uh, but they, they're gonna email to everyone tomorrow. Everyone.
Well, I think the council wanted.
He can't print it, his personal computer can't, um, connect to the, the city.
Well, what, what does that one say the limits are?
Can you explain weak mayor, um?
Basically, it would just be, you know, there's five members, each person has the same exact conclusion of the mayor, that's what a weak mayor system is.
And that goes with all expenditures?
Right, and I think our charter, I went through and I was looking at the charter the other day and I, and I think it says all expenditures are approved by the board, I mean, other than, you know, what's granted in a resolution.
So aside from whatever a resolution says that anyone up here can do, we obviously, we can't do.
So basically in my eyes, the town clerk is the town manager, she runs everything. Uh, and I think that she should have a spending limit. I don't know exactly what that should be with this particular resolution that I'm holding, which you say it's not, it's current. Could be different, but it says one thousand dollars for the town clerk.
Correct.
What do you all think it should be? Five hundred enough or? And then it says the mayor can approve one thousand and one to five thousand after reasonable inquiry as to need and pricing. What do you think the limit should be for the mayor if it exceeds what the town clerk is authorized to do?
To me personally, that totally contradicts the weak mayor system, but that's fine, asking maybe nine.
It's a resolution to, in, in addition to our charter. So it's not giving him any more, I mean, this resolution is, we're assigning, we're still voting on his authority, so it's still really a weak mayor because he's not doing anything that we're not giving him power to do, so.
Right, I'm, I'm controlled by whatever the council says. Now, you're right, if it were in the charter, I would say, too bad, you know?
Yeah.
You know, but, and again, I, I've used it, that I can recall, I've used it twice, follows up the water plant, follows to get the accountant. Uh.
And it's not emergencies only, it's not like he can't do this every day, there has to be a, a emergency to use it.
And, yeah.
This is general, so it doesn't require anything, it just says the mayor can spend.
Exactly.
Up to, I, I would say, let's set a price limit for the clerk and then.
I'd say let's find the resolution he's talking about first, this call, it might supersede this one.
Yeah.
That's right.
I wanna get back to the charter where everybody understands, these old resolutions, I guess you can keep digging them up forever.
What's the name of, what's the number of that one that you have?
Uh, I, I'm not gonna send this one right now, cause I, I wanna verify, so we'll, I'll have them go back through and make sure this is actually the one that is in, in the binder, but I think it's this, let's see. Yeah, twenty-twenty-one, two-fifteen, it's just that for where this one is signed and then.
That's the one, that's the one we're looking at.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just not seeing it here, oh, maybe it is, maybe.
Is.
This is the one we passed during COVID, so the town could keep running. During COVID, we were scared, we wasn't waiting to meet, they were trying to set up some Zoom and couldn't get it going and it just, we passed this.
No, this one was different.
We, we passed this.
This one looks like it might be missing a page.
Uh, the only page is missing is the very last page I got there.
Oh, no, no, look, cause it goes from two to page, it goes from page two to page four.
It might be out of order.
So, but it's missing, it's missing, it's missing a page, cause I'm like, wait, it looks like he just gaps, yeah, that's where it is. It gaps, it gaps, yeah, it gaps.
That one is, it's missing, well, this is the.
But let, let, let's let, let's let the clerks verify and just make sure and then we'll send that out.
Uh, I think, question on. I have that, uh, was it?
The person policy?
Is that?
No, we didn't get that, I didn't get it.
I guess you mail it to me.
Oh, okay.
So you're, you're on, you're on a. Motion is to resolve this and get back to whatever the original charter is.
So let's put it on the next, so let's, so let's get the actual purchasing call, let's see, we'll send that out and then we'll put it on the next agenda and then we'll. That's my recommendation, and we talk about it and bring it out, but we completely have recommendations of, yeah, fine.
I think we need to get a budget resolution, was there?
That's coming up, we, that's coming up for uh, September, no, later than September.
What?
You said budgeting resolution?
No, 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 my, 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 my old resolution.
Oh, a bunch of resolutions, oh, he's ahead of him, okay, alright, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
In the ideal world, um, Kerry is the manager here. So I think, and this might not be the segue to it, but I'm using it. We need to find a place where she can have some peer training, whether it be with the county, like they come a couple hours, or she goes a couple hours. Or High Springs, or Branford, um, a few different municipalities that can help with clerk skills or manager skills, and I'm not saying they're lacking, but I mean, peer teaching is, you know, invaluable.
Yeah.
And that would cost some money on our part, but I mean.
Yep.
The skills will get that money back.
And, and I do know there have been a couple clerks that the previous staff left behind that they used to hit up, who I think they have reached out to and have bonded. Uh, yeah, no, I don't disagree.
And there'll always be a bind, but we don't want a bind, we want, uh, the best clerk there is.
Yeah, and I agree.
The best down.
Yeah, I, I agree, I hundred percent agree, and I think it'll take a little time, but I think they'll both get there and are getting there.
If she calls and reaches over the town of Ranford, I think Alicia last year went to a training that's specific to that role, she's been in her role for a short period of time. But there are training options there, and then one of the other options, she can also talk about how this meeting is ran there, not that you guys don't run the meeting right, but additional things that might be incorporated, like an accounts payable list of bills to be paid, that are held up purposely because of the, the existence of this resolution or non-existence of it. And when she has certain bills that she can pay because you guys have given her permission, and certain bills that she presents to you guys for you to approve for payment, which goes back to your gist of where you're trying to get to, your point of saying you can't pay these without us all agreeing to it. And it gives you guys time to also question things and go, what's that, the Verizon bill, et cetera?
We used to almost have to approve everything. I mean, James, James, you remember, when they wanted something for his office, they got a list together and brought it in front of the board and the board voted on it. I'm not asking for me to have no power, I'm asking for somebody not to get in trouble doing something they shouldn't be doing with the citizens' money of full left. That's what I'm asking.
And the League of Nations is probably another place that you guys might wanna check into, I don't know if you guys participate in that or not, I'm in Brandyford, it is.
They give you a league of cities.
A league of cities, yeah. If you're, if you're in the audience, just raise your hand first before you know it, we'll call it.
Alright, well, you're, you're gonna email us this, and we're gonna talk about this next week, the June meeting?
The June meeting.
Not, not this special meeting.
It's a, it's a.
June. Can I, can I make a motion, the table?
You can make a motion, table, you can make a motion. Of course, it's put on the agenda.
I don't wanna, we gotta do something like.
Uh, over here, yeah, I'll go say anything, okay.
And that's meeting being the one that you're gonna have.
This will be June, this will be the regular.
Not, yeah, yeah, yes, the June, the June. The, the regularly scheduled June third Monday, the month of June, yeah. Okay, there's.
And remember, peace can be gone at one of these.
Yeah, but that's the one that I will be here for, if you guys are talking about either moving it or.
Yeah, we'll remove that one.
We need to do this at the most special meeting, cause once we have it in front of us, it's not a big deal, we just make those adjustments.
Do you, the one next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't recommend that.
I don't wanna put a lot of stuff on the special meeting, because if we're respecting Mr. Coon's time, he has to be gone, he's coming at four thirty, when he gets off of work and he's leaving to go out of town after that, so if we put all of this extra stuff.
And I'm leaving.
What do you say, Mr. Coon?
Nah, I, I don't, I don't wanna dig into this, I, I, I mean, June's good, but we do need to set a date, but he didn't tell us he was gonna go.
We gotta change that.
Before we leave tonight, we need to set a date for the June meeting.
Okay.
Uh, okay, and the last one here is, well, I guess the second to last, we can go ahead and vote, well, after this, we can vote for a new meeting, uh, for June. Uh, twenty twenty-two, the item nine, uh, town council resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-seven.
Okay, so it'd be my item, um, so I, uh, have been, uh, done a little research in the charter. I talked to Mr. Pope about the charter that's on the website. It's not clear to me whether or not that is the actual full charter, or if that is just the amendments. Have you gotten an answer on that, or?
I did call, um, to ask you to find out what they have filed with them, and I have not heard back from them yet, so I'm waiting for them to get back with me, to see what we have actually filed with them.
So the issue that I have, or the question that I have is, when you look at that charter on the town website, you don't see section one, two, three, four. You know, it says section one, and then it goes section five. So, you know, and it does have additions and deletions, it has strike throughs, but one of the requirements of the charter is to define what type of government we have, and that's in one or, section one or two, so that doesn't have section one or two in it.
There's some other sections that are jump around too, when you start going through.
Absolutely, so anyhow, but anyhow, that led me to just, just looking at, uh, you know, processes and stuff. And, uh, this town council resolution, R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, um, there was an issue with the interpretation of this a while back, before I was on the council. Uh, it's bothered me ever since, so I'd like to, um, discuss, uh, a new resolution to address the process for council persons and or citizens to add items to the agenda. Uh, my concern is that in here, it says that the agenda shall be prepared by town staff. I would think that's the town clerk, in her absence, the assistant town clerk, subject to review and edification of the town, of the mayor of the town. So I don't believe that that can authorize the mayor to not put something on the agenda that a council person wants on the agenda, because he has equal powers. And the word edification, I looked it up in the dictionary, it does not mean to edit, as in an editor changing the wording of something. It's a totally different meaning, so I don't know, that may be a legal term, Mr. Pope, can you?
For edification, um, I mean, I wouldn't have the definition right off the top of my head, but, um, in every way I've ever seen it, um, similarly to, not necessarily approval, but to the satisfaction of, maybe?
The mayor?
Right, so upon review, he would be satisfied with the way that the town clerk has, you know, prepared the agenda. I don't know that that necessarily is granting the power to, to change the agenda, I think based off the charter, you know, each council member has the ability to put whatever they want to go on the agenda, not on the charter of the agenda.
Correct. So thank you, I, I would personally like to see that changed to, uh, the town clerk prepares the agenda. You can add in there with the assistants, the assistant town clerk, um, and it's presented to the mayor. Um, I, I don't like the fact that the mayor can, uh, prevent an agenda item from being with this verbiage, and I, I actually think this conflicts with the charter, that's why I was looking for the charter. I think this conflicts with the charter, so I don't think that we can give him the power to prevent agenda items from being on the agenda by other council members. Um, in addition to that, this same resolution establishes the rules of order, or rules and procedures, uh, for meetings.
Where are you, where are you at?
Uh, currently on and under page.
Or just one second.
Uh, it's titled, uh, Town of Fort White, Meeting Rules and Procedures, and I'm supposed to page one. So.
Oh, perfect.
This is kind of really vague, and I talked to, um, Mr. Pope, and asked him how he felt about Robert's Rules of Order, and, uh, he's actually experienced in that, he uses that, um, in his capacity in another municipality. Um, I think that that would solve a lot of our order problems during the meetings, I think, uh, Mr. Pope can confirm, he said that, uh, it a lot, a lot of times speeds the process up.
We use it in Jennings, I do, I do like Robert's Rules, they, they're very streamlined, it does speed the process up, it makes it less of a forum and more of a discussion amongst the council members, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So I would like to recommend that we adopt Robert's Rules as our meeting rules and procedures, and I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Pope to be our parliamentarian. Um, and then the last, uh.
Do you do that in Jennings?
Yes and no, the town clerk kinda does a lot of it, but I do help per hour with that.
And previously, I'm just saying from my own experience, the clerk did it with the past mayor.
Well, the reason.
She read me what you have here.
The reason I recommend it, Pope, is cause he's well versed in Robert's Rules.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with him, just.
I, I. I, I would like that personally.
Let me, so let me respond, or you don't?
Okay, no, I got one more, um, and in this same, uh, resolution, it establishes the voting by the council, and, uh, you know, I've heard some discussion recently, uh, I heard it at the meeting where we were discussing the appointment process, the tie, blah, 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 and recommendations from persons at the podium, there was discussion about the previous rules of procedure, the previous voting procedure, and it was said that in the past, the mayor did not have a vote unless there was a tie. So, I, I actually brought an old, uh, rules of procedure that was in effect prior to this one, um, which was, where that was the case. So, I, I would like to discuss that with the council and see how the rest of the council feels about the mayor voting, um, only when there's.
As the tiebreaker.
As the tiebreaker.
I think that was done during the COVID or the Donald Cook.
Donald Cook, when Donald Cook got sick, when he was gone a lot.
And that's common among the.
And then when we would miss one more person, you didn't even have a forum without the mayor voting.
Oh, you wouldn't need that, okay.
I mean, right, because when Donald Cook was missing, and then somebody else missed, and then leave it up.
And we can, yeah, so let me, real quick, and then I'll open it up. My understanding, and speaking to like the mayor before the last mayor, is the mayor always had some level of control over the agenda, and just like happened at the beginning of this meeting, anything that any council member wants to add can't be added, right? Y'all vote, you got it, it's there, or if you vote to put on the next one, it's there, but I don't, it, it's for me personally, it's neither here nor there, it just makes my job easier. If it's on there and I can't change it, great, you wanna talk about it, we're gonna talk about it, um, not that, you know. So that, I, you're not gonna create any fight from me on that, um, and then I'll say for the voting.
Here, here's a copy of the old resolution, if you'd love to read the whole process.
Can we?
And so, I mean, on, on the voting, I don't particularly care, I mean, if y'all don't want me to vote unless it's a tiebreaker, I won't vote, I mean, that's what y'all wanna do.
Do we have a clear copy of the charter anywhere?
Oh.
I don't have all of them.
So this.
I can't get it down.
So my unders, my understanding, that, that's not gospel, um, is I, I believe I reached out to, I don't know, one of the legislative aides or something, could, when I first got here, asking the same question, I was like, hey, there, like, if you look at the old charter, it looks like a well-written coherent doc, not that there's anything wrong with this charter, it's just not as coherent as the last one was. And they said, hey, when we made the changes, whatever, it was approved in the senate, the governor signed it, like, this is what it was, and I'm like, oh, okay, so that's what people on the website, I mean, but d- definitely track it down, cause I could be very wrong. I mean, I'll keep, yeah, keep looking, but. Yeah, I, I agree, I would love to see, you know.
But that, that's on the town website, can't be a complete charter, I mean, because it doesn't have the necessary elements of a charter. It doesn't establish what type of town government it has. If section one, two, and three, four are gone, that, that's where it establishes what type of town government.
Well, I don't know if the charter has to say, this is this type of government, it just has to spell out, right, and the authorities and powers that it gives. That is de facto what type of government it is, right?
Cause I, I'm under this understanding that it has to spell out what type of government it has.
I, I wish my computer was up, cause there's, there's a statute that's directed at all plan for this, um, that lays out what you have to spell out in the ch, town charter, I know elections is one of the things. I know the voting process is one of the things, but it's a whole list of things, uh, but I can double check our charter against that list to make sure that we're compliant. Typically, if we're not compliant, then they won't accept it, and the partners, they won't, but I'll, I'll look through it and make sure.
And, and my understanding too is also, you know, in, in the, in the previous charter, and, and maybe even in the one before that, the mayor had much more authority per the charter. I don't care, I don't want it, I don't care.
Yeah, he could arrest people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. But I'm just.
Nineteen fifty-seven charges, he could, yeah.
I think that was one of those.
Yeah, he could. Remember, this used to be a jail.
He was probably intoxicated, he was arrested.
Just go to jail, and he can put him in jail right here.
Oh, that's okay, that's not funny, and, and, and the one prior to this current one that we had goes off, but, so yeah, I mean, look, hey, I don't.
We were having to deal with all illegal charges, I mean, that's why I kinda put you together in the last minute, trying to get the fire team covered, was covered and.
Do we want to come up?
I would love to see a charter.
I, I agree, though, that we need to back up from what was done during either COVID or Donald Cook, and I hate to keep saying it that way, but, um, it was done in one of those situations.
Do, do we want to maybe put this one also in the June meeting and come up with specific recommendation? We, we could be here till midnight.
I would think so.
I would like to make a motion tonight, personally, and address this tonight.
Okay, and that's your right, you can do that, I, I would say to be fair to the other council members, just to, you know, we're, that's a pretty major change.
Well, I have specific changes that I.
No, I know, but I'm, right, but I'm saying to allow the other council members.
And would that be three different motions?
We're gonna make a motion to.
No, it could be one motion.
You're amending this resolution.
Would it be an amendment to the resolution or a new resolution?
You can, you can do it as an amendment if you want to.
Yeah, you can do it as amendment, what, what I've seen, how we've been doing it, is it, it's a new resolution, and we, yeah, I mean, so.
And basically, you could do a new resolution to amend this resolution.
And that's what, that's how we do it, is they hear the latest version of the resolution, bam, this is it, and it overwrites this current version, I've seen that for a.
Then you can update it, title it too, that's not twenty twenty-one.
Right.
I'm in the number.
So the floor's open for motion, I'd like to make a motion.
For a motion?
I'd like to make a motion if we amend town resolution, town council resolution number R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, uh, specifically amending the agenda process to state that agendas shall be prepared by the town clerk in her absence, the assistant town clerk, uh, and will be submitted to the mayor, but it will not be reviewed or edification, it will just be submitted to the mayor.
So why submit it, if I have to?
Well, you're the chairman of the council, so. I mean, if you don't want it submitted to you, that's, that's, but, but my recommendation is that we eliminate the edification and review by the mayor, uh, and establish that town staff is town clerk and or assistant town clerk.
It's, okay, so on that one, that's in the run.
Move the motion.
Right, right, no, but for the sake of your own motion, I'm saying. Um. As far as leaving as town staff.
Point of order? Am I, am I allowed to finish my motion?
It's, it's not a point of order, but I'm saying, so like, if we ever have a situation where they're both gone, like they have been, I'm the one in here, it'll be a justice.
Should we be discussing this after I make a motion?
So, but.
Can I have some clarification?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, there's one.
Okay, so my motion is to amend, right over. Town council resolution number R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, establishing town staff as the town clerk and or the assistant town clerk, and eliminate the review and edification by the mayor. In addition to establishing our rules of procedure as Robert's Rules of Order, and establishing the attorney as our parliamentarian. And I.
We'll go, go, go back, we'll, we'll, we'll.
We would establish Robert's Rules of Order as our rules of procedure.
Okay.
And, um, the voting, I'd like to establish that the members of the council vote, uh, using the verbiage of the prior, all town council members in attendance except the mayor shall vote on all issues unless legally abstaining. The mayor or vice mayor providing in his or her absence should not be entitled to vote upon any manner before the council unless when the vote's cast shall be evenly divided.
Okay, so just reverting to the previous.
Reverting to the verbiage in twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty dash two of four.
Okay. Okay. Alright, that's your motion. Look, we can do that, but, just for example, as an unintended con, consequence, only the clerk and town clerk can prepare the agenda. We wouldn't have had certain meetings if I wasn't in here preparing the agenda. So that would have put me in violation of the town law, just to come in here and do it, which is fine, by me, then we just don't have an agenda, we lose the clerk and the town clerk again, and it's like, good luck, you know, so we can do that, we can do that. But, maybe, that's why I say maybe, maybe amend the verbiage, you know, maybe amend the verbiage, so that it doesn't leave us in a bind, like the bind that we've been in in the past.
I say up the motion.
Say up the motion, but I, I was trying to go say the purpose, um.
And you got us through a lot, and, and you're not, you got us through a lot, you did a lot.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, Robert's Rules of Order. I, I do think it's a good idea to have the attorney be the parliamentarian, but when you say, hey, we're adopting Robert's Rules of Order, it's a book like this, so what's gonna happen when it's, someone goes back and reads the book and says, hey, technically, you have sixty-six seconds, it took you sixty-seven seconds, nix it, and it's a year later, what are we gonna do?
Our parliamentarian would, uh, address that.
Right, or say, it, it might even be addressing Robert's Rules of Order, hey, that means you gotta go back and do it, we, we can do it, we can do, we can do it, I'm just.
That's why I recommend the attorney, cause he's well versed in parliament.
He's well versed, okay, you feel very well.
Um, do you think that would help control people like me in the audience?
Wait, oh, wait, 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 horrible, so.
I don't even think it would.
I think it would help control all of us.
I mean, that's a book, I mean, that's a book.
And I'm right at the top of that list. One of the sixes I say, I'm not gonna call the names, but that really knows it.
And that really is in the reading.
And they really know the Robert Rules of Law, he can make a lot of headaches.
Cause there's multiple things we've done, that I go back, and there's like a forum of small governments and Robert's Rules of Orders, and it's, hey, hey, I, again, whether it goes left or right, to me, whatever, whatever, the council voted, it's the law. I'm just saying as, so that it's on the record, hey, the mayor said this, remember, he said it, that's the only reason I'm saying here right now, is for the record.
Um, I, I might be way off base, but I'm kinda going from what you're saying, and you made a great point, and I'm not throwing a dart at you, but, and we've all improved on it, as big mouth as I am, I've improved. I think what Mr. Harold is going after is that, you know, we need to direct our business and be civil about it, and one person come at a time, and every person that speaks come to the podium, and I, I think, and I kinda even nudged you a little bit at the county commission meeting, of what a good example they, they were setting. You know, that it just runs like clockwork, and they have arguments too, I mean, we're all gonna agree to disagree, but we've gotta, gotta get a grip on some of this, and I might be totally off of Mr. Harold from what he's saying, but having said that, can it be worded that we use Robert's Rules of Order as a guide? You know, or as a model versus, you know, page sixteen, paragraph two? Um, I think, and I'm gonna stop talking so that you can interject, I think you're just trying to get a smoother.
Well, I talked to Mr. Pope about it, and can you share with me what you shared, uh, share with the council, what you shared with me about how that helps the meetings in Jennings? And, and I'll say before you do, that I believe that if Jennings can do it, the week ago.
Right, so basically what I discussed with Mr. Harold is over in Jennings, we have one public comment section, and it's, you know, it's on the agenda, and then there are the public comments throughout the meeting, which kinda streamlines the meeting, it's less back and forth between the council and the public and that kinda thing. Um, so that definitely streamlines it, and makes the meetings go faster. Um, and then also, I mean, Robert, I agree with you guys, Robert's Rules of Order, I'm not gonna pretend like I have every page memorized on that, it is a very, very thick thing. Um, your suggestion about maybe just using it as a guide may be a smarter way to go, just so that somebody doesn't come back with a gotcha moment. So, I mean, you could say, if you want me to be the parliamentarian, I'm fine with that, and then I will, you know, we, we will loosely abide by Robert's Rules of Orders, uh, whenever, you know, something's getting out of order, and I can step in and get it, get it back where it should be, if that's what you guys want me to do, I'm fine with it.
Right, or we could even say like, hey, per the attorney's discretion, you know, as the parliamentarian, he can have final say. You know, I, I'm not trying to hold on to power, I'm just trying to make sure.
It's gonna help you.
Yeah, and you know, we got people who are gonna open Robert's Rules of Order and find, and, and screw us in some, because we don't memorize the whole, but that's the only reason I bring it up.
Well, we would use it as a guide.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's, that's why, personally, I recommend, I'm not opposed to maybe some of these changes, that's why I recommended, let us all digest this and think about it and talk about it, so we can phrase it correctly and do it in June, but it was kinda shotgun, so there's a motion, there's a second, it's ordered the way Councilmember Harold has explicitly ordered it, this is how it is right now.
Can I please ask that we put this off till June, so I can look into this?
Yeah, so there's a motion and a second, so right, there's a motion and a second, yeah, you, you approve it as is, or you, or you say nay, and so, uh, so all in favor of these changes explicitly and specifically, as Councilmember Harold has outlined them, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, okay, then you said aye?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go say nay?
Nay.
I'll say nay, uh, that'll be what it is, we'll have to have, um, do, do we want to allow the town clerk and myself to sign, it's gonna be a new res. Do, do we want to allow the town clerk and myself to sign, it's gonna be a new resolution number, it's gonna be updated one? We want, allow us to make these changes and sign it? That's another benefit of waiting, is you can actually, our actual resolution.
Comfortable with the verbiage, we, you can either prepare that and go ahead and implement it, if, um. Yeah, I'll go to the town clerk, 'cause I didn't catch every word that she said, but, I mean, if, if, you can prepare that and submit it to the mayor, we can. Uh, immediately, or whatever.
And be, between yourself and our, we can, we can just tack the words. Okay.
But, is it, are you supposed to prepare a resolution?
Specifically, I, I do for my, my other municipalities, but, um, you know.
Yeah, definitely the charter.
It does say in the charter, um, all contracts, I, I have to go look and see if it's a resolution or not.
I, I would feel more comfortable with preparing it personally.
I think that.
That way we get all the legal needs are covered.
Okay, so we'll have, uh, my Pope, or our attorney, prepare that, that, that resolution. Uh, and if, and if you're saying you only want the attorney, so I would put that on the June, if that's what you want, if that's what you're saying is, or, or if it's in the charter. You only want the attorney to be the only one drafting resolutions, period, then that, cause.
Well, he's gonna check the charter, he said he looked at it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say just verify that, bring it up, bring it up. Alright, Susan comments?
I might just, um. I'll be real quick, 'cause I know everybody's tired, I am too. I, um, hi, Karen Harold, I just had a comment about the, the park, specifically East Park. Because I live, live right there by the park, and I know, uh, Councilwoman Merrick, she said that you'll be looking at the booklets and putting some things together. I just wanted to, was, um, just a few suggestions, being that I do live there. Um, the park bench, if we do get a park bench or a couple for these parks, but we look at ones that have a divider, not just an open park bench. They have some that has a divider in the middle, 'cause people lay over there and sleep. When we're looking at playground equipment, can we look at some of the equipment that doesn't have anything that's completely closed that someone can sleep in at night? And I say that because living there over several years, I can't tell you how many times I've had to call for issues after dark or midnights, well, including Councilwoman Terry. So when looking at that, if we can, and I liked, um, the suggestions of, uh, the heavy plastic, it's, I think, more durable. Um, the steel, like it's hot, the wood, it chips, and it'll be messed up in the year, if we see what happens with the picnic tables. And then the lighting, um, he was talking about all the lighting, and it sounds great, because the light that's there now. It's reflecting on the ground, and it does not light up the pavilion, it's just on the ground. Uh, they replaced the bulb at the beginning of the year, but it wasn't the same type, I don't know what, why it's not bright. But with the lighting, um, dependent upon how many poles are put out there, if he, if you're gonna put the poles that, uh, I guess Doug, is that his name, was suggesting? Where are they gonna be placed? Are they gonna be lighting together, are they gonna be on the outer part of the park, or some of the residence lights are gonna shine in? Um, I'm real concerned about safety, security, that's why I was talking about the park benches. Um, and I've seen them, they're all over different towns, they have like little divider in the middle, there might be some in the books, so people aren't using it as a bed. Playground equipment, people are hiding out there in the mornings, or even at night, in spaces doing drugs, I've seen that in parks. Um, just, just my comments, but thank you. And handicap parking, I see they're doing it at one park, it, it would be great if they could do it at these two, but I don't, we don't have grant money for that, but maybe in the future. Because trying to, if you have a handicapped child or a person with you, you know, it's just parking on dirt when it rains, it's difficult to maneuver around that area. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna say, I, I agree with everything she just said, and just because of my own, like, y'all know what she means by the divider with the bench? So that you roll off of it if you go to sleep, is that what you mean?
Yeah, you can't, it's small, instead of being long, it's in the middle.
Yeah.
And there's, you can't lay on it, there's like, it's crime prevention to environmental design when designing parks. And public facilities, they look at things like that, the lighting, uh, the shrubbery, the bushes, can people hide in their playground equipment, is there a place where people can hide out in there? So, that's why I brought that up.
And there's something going in that, going on in that park, just about every night.
Yeah.
And that's nobody's fault, but it, they live at the same time.
And even the, uh, with Main Street coming through and all the beautifications and everything, when we're looking at the, the colors, you know, instead of a bunch of. Different, and this is just me being picky, like, you know, greens, it's environmentally friendly. It's better, you know, instead of having reds, blues, yellows, 'cause then you have fading of the equipment and the benches, and, but green in the center with pretty green landscaping around eventually is nice. You know? Just thoughts.
Thank you. Well, without going into detail, don't you do a lot of this at, um, places all over?
I mean, I, I do, my, my background is law enforcement, and I did crime prevention through environmental designs, checking, you know, schools. Public facilities, businesses, um, but.
Okay, alright, thank you, so, uh, item six, council member comments, we got the first one, you had the first one.
Uh, regional stakeholders meeting, um, so it's my understanding that we need to go as a municipality to this meeting and. Not just talk about sewage and water, um, we need to take any and all major. Issues, projects, whatever, to this meeting, 'cause this is the time to discuss it with other stakeholders. Potential interlocal partners, so, um, obviously we need to be prepared to talk about the sewage, I think that's a big part of that meeting. Um, we need to probably give an update and be prepared to have a plan if questioned by. DEP, how we're gonna run it, when it's built. Um, and I don't think we have one right now, so in absence of a plan, we need to have. Some ideas about what we're gonna say, like, we're reaching out to the county, the city of Lake City. You know, we're gonna check with other possible, you know, contractors that might be able to run it for us. Um, I think they're establishing the, uh, utility authority, uh, we might need to check and see if they, and maybe get, you know, proposals. Um, uh, is anyone here still under the impression that the town can run it?
I think that's what we're gonna have workshops on, um, coming up now.
But I think we need to be ready in this meeting, um.
We, they're, they're not.
That's not a mandatory meeting.
There's. I think it's more of the utility authorities. Information and, from what the research that I've done, it's not a mandatory meeting for us to attend, we don't have to be there and. Put on this big presentation or whatever, they are encouraging us to come, but we don't have to. And so we don't have to be prepared to present anything, now, if we're there, of course, they're gonna ask us, and, you know, all of these things, but it's not mandatory for us to do anything.
And we just had a, we just had a meeting this, earlier today with, uh, the county attorney, Joel. Joel, Mr. uh, Mr. Foreman, he had, him and some of the other staff there at the county, they, they actually put together this meeting. And so he gave us, correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but like, kind of the intent and the scope. Behind what that meeting was, and it was more a collaboration, and for us to bring up, for example, CRA, to bring up, hey, you know, we're. As far as administering these grants, uh, and we, not even so much to help administering the grant, but just general administrative help. Like if we need a, like, what's a request or proposal, or whatever it may be, you know, the county has concerns. Can we move forward with Lake City, my understanding is there may or may not have been interest from Lake City on that. So this is where we could get together and talk about things like that, and DEP is not gonna say, hey, give me the square footage, and look, that's, that's not, what? The people who put this together relate to me, I don't think, but you, you were there, you tell me if I'm off base.
No, no, I, I agree with what you're saying, it's kind of, hopefully we can alleviate some of the concerns, I think is, uh, the reason behind the meeting.
Well, I've reached out to county commissioners, 'cause I came from the county commission. And I, I'm under the impression that sewage for Fort White is a big topic on that. That, that's like, the meet, that's like, I mean, this is the big, the biggest item that's gonna be addressed, so. You know, I'm just saying, you know, we, we could, this could be, you know. We could lose the grant, I guess, at this meeting, if DEP isn't satisfied with whatever we come with, right, I mean, is that?
Possibly, I didn't, no, I didn't get that, that we lost the grant, um.
I mean, what are your thoughts, do you think they're expecting the plan of operation, I mean, I, the reason, discussions I've had with elected officials. You know, outside of this room, is that, you know, BP doesn't give away twenty million dollars to an entity that doesn't have. The means or the funds to run, they're, they're not gonna give it to you, and I think that's been said in the county commission meeting. They're not gonna give away twenty million dollars without knowing that this isn't gonna fail, or, or. You know, that we can't do it.
Yeah, man. So, they gave us the money, so if they, if they didn't think we could somehow manage it, they wouldn't, according to what you're saying, they wouldn't have given it to us, right or no?
Well, the, the answer I got from a county commissioner was that the reason they gave it to us was because. The county went to Tallahassee with Fort White, and that we would not have gotten it on our own. And that the DEP gave us those grants, and, and the initial one, because the county was right beside Fort White, saying, this is a partnership, we can do this together. Now, with the county out of the picture, I've been told that there's a possibility that DEP could say. You all don't have a plan, and we don't have confidence that you have the ability.
Well, so, a couple things, per, I think personally if that was the case, the grant, there would have been strings attached to, to the grant, and they would have given it. Regardless, I, I guess, I would say, I would call, I would say call DEP.
Well, they're gonna be at the meeting, they.
They're gonna be, yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, you know, just, as opposed to what a county commissioner, just, I would call the people who, you know, gave us the twenty million, you know, see, see how, you know, where they're at with that, but. Secondarily, if they're gonna take away the grant, 'cause the county's not working with us, then they're gonna take away the grant. Because we, we went before the board, I mean, so, I don't know, we're sure, I guess, what the, we're not gonna change that from now, maybe seven days from now. We went before the county, they said no.
My thoughts, sorry, we just need to have some sort of a plan, you know, or, but what are we gonna say? If we are, I, I mean, I don't think it's prudent to not show up, I mean, that's not a good idea. And, and I think we should discuss who all is gonna go, uh, I think Ms. Terry said she cannot go.
I, I was planning on telling them.
So you're gonna go, I'll try to go.
I'm gonna.
Mr. Coon's gonna go, Ms. Merrick said no. Uh, I don't necessarily want to speak, but I want to be there to represent the town, so, I mean, mayor, if you'd like to speak and do all the speaking. I just think we need to be prepared to answer questions about how we're gonna run it. And if we say we don't have a plan, then right now, then we need to say what we're doing to develop the plan.
Right, yeah, and I think we spoke about this, I was gonna say in May, we're in May, it was the fir-, the first meeting in May. Is that for June, and we could say right now, I was gonna try to do either a special meeting or a workshop, maybe a workshop first. For the water and or the sewage, so we can prioritize the sewage and do more on that. And try to shoot for June, uh, or July latest, 'cause I think construction will start, like, I think they're shooting for, I think, they'll go late June, early July, late July, something like that. Um, 'cause we, I agree, we need an ordinance, hey, are we gonna make people hook up? You know, what are we gonna do about that? Um, so, and I agree, we talked about that, so, I mean, there, there has to be workshops in June or July latest. So I, I was working on putting something together with the clerks on, like the workshop for the sewage. I'm shooting for June. But I should be able to, should be able to have it by, uh, July. Like, like feasibility based on the first pay, technically, the ten million dollar grant, and where that'll put us financially, after, assuming X number of hookups at whatever rate. And then where will we at this, the twelve million dollar grant, assuming X number of hookups at a certain rate, that'll put, I had a meeting with Brian Roche here. When, earlier this, I don't know, earlier this week, earlier this week, and the numbers he showed me, these are his numbers. And I, we might even be able to have him at the meeting if everyone would feel more comfortable, we're, we're not that bad. Uh, so like, and I asked him, I said, hey, where'd this three hundred thousand number come from, he goes, I don't know. Like, I don't know where that even came from, 'cause that's just blown out of proportion, it's not, won't cost that, but, but, the answer is, yes, we're one hundred.
Well, he told me at that meeting down at the community center a few months ago, he actually pulled up those figures which were from a few years ago. And he said, these are the only numbers we got, I mean, and it was over two hundred thousand, and so I, I think it has been changed to three hundred, just because people are. Speculating for inflation and whatever reason that, you know, it's went up and wherever that.
Yeah, so anyway, so, yeah, so I guess the answer, but yes, I'll be at that meeting, um.
Didn't this sewage come up, don't we get rid of it?
Yeah.
Should we give Mr. Pope direction to at least call DEP and see if we can get an extension? Cause time is fixing to run out. I mean, all, all we can say is no.
He, yeah, he, he can ask, I believe.
Mr. Pope, can you do that, DEP, do you have any extension on that, I felt there is, there's a strict deadline, I don't know the exact date.
Yeah.
They wanted to get it fixed.
Yeah, Brian Roche asked.
I know they said, but.
I, I asked too, but.
If we didn't already, you might be there.
Ask again, yes, after he asks, I wouldn't ask too much more, 'cause then they really like to grant away.
Tell them, tell them, it's a whole new council, I mean, it's, I mean, the office is all new, I mean, it just, I mean, you can explain it, I mean.
We'd say, I mean, we can give you, we can give you the point of content, my understanding from, from myself asking it, from Brian Roche asking is. Hey, spend the money by this time, or we're taking it back, and we have, so, but, my only is asking it. Okay. Is there something else?
Juneteenth.
Uh, oh, yes.
The yard sale, you have the yard sale?
Yeah.
So, uh, right, um.
With the yard sale, is that what we're talking about now?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the fourth.
I just, I just wanted to make a suggestion that we, the town of Fort White, keep the yard sale. Rather than that go-to Main Street, because we did that successfully for the past year. And I'm certainly willing to keep doing what I did to help with the yard sale.
After listening to Ms. Beck talk, I think we ought to keep it too, not just for that reason, but she said they shouldn't have it, just event after event after event, that's something Fort White has already established. For having them, I mean, if they don't have one on Main Street or something, they can do their own.
And on the yard sale.
I mean, ours works down everywhere it's at. Uh, Ms. Beck said that they need to have. Been after.
The county event coordinator.
Right, so.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Uh, real briefly, I just wanna share this with the council, and probably give it to, um, the clerk. Uh, this is an email I found in the District Two email box of Mrs. Clanny, that was, uh, from the Clay Swager or the local district. Um, you know, they weren't in compliance with the promises they made when we entered into that agreement. For the, every, be in every plan and zoning council meeting, uh, they were supposed to attend every council meeting, every plan and zoning. They haven't been, y'all almost said they haven't seen them in years, so, I mean, I, I don't know if we're getting a best discount rate, this says they were doing it for sixty-five an hour, and every other was charging a hundred and twenty-five, and, and, uh. Right, but I'm just saying, this is something to consider, I give it to the clerk, and she can. But I'm just saying, this is something to consider, I give it to the clerk, and she can scan it and send it out, y'all. There was anyone mentioned about that, I don't know what our plan is, and I don't want to invest in tonight, but, um, I did also see an interlocal agreement. Um, that was proposed around the time when Garrett took over, uh, for the county to do our plan and zoning. And they were willing to do it for ten thousand dollars a year, um, just throwing that out there, I don't know if anybody's family or county knew our plan and zoning, but. That was the other option at that time, so, that's all I can say about that.
All right, thank you very much, okay, the June meeting, um, I think, Mr. Pope, you'll be out the sixteenth?
Yes, let me pull up what I can tell you exactly. I will be, the fourteenth on that, on that Saturday, but yeah, from the sixteenth, that entire meeting.
Oh, that whole week, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, um. So we wanna do, yeah, do we wanna push?
So I'm gonna go.
Do we wanna push it back, I, I think we push it back, and we see how the next meeting goes, because the way we've been going, we might throw another meeting in here, the mic's on. So what, so I say.
What they do when I say.
Push it back, can you do the twenty third?
Uh, no, I'm not getting back until the twenty fourth in the afternoon time.
Twenty four, so maybe we can do the twenty, can everyone do June, twenty?
The thirty.
What day do you, what day do you have, Jenny?
James, I have the first Tuesday of the month, so.
Okay, okay. Twenty, uh, twenty fifth, twenty sixth, what'd you say, uh, House of the Coons, or twenty sixth?
I'm going the twenty third through the twenty sixth, or the twenty sixth would work.
Okay, that Thursday?
Either the ninth or the twenty sixth.
The ninth?
Well, I'm just throwing numbers, I don't know what I said.
No, I just couldn't understand what you said, the ninth or.
Either week before these, or it's gonna be late the week after, not now.
The ninth?
And if, yeah.
Ninth for a hand, or a few reps.
I always say the ninth because.
Certainly, I would have another big play at that one. Does that work?
Cause we have on the twenty, wait, we have, we have the twenty seventh, okay, uh, okay, so, the June, June nine, yeah, about, about a week and two, two day yet.
June ninth.
You good?
Uh.
And with all these changes and additions to meetings and stuff?
Yeah.
We, we need to really make sure that's put on the website.
And, that, 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 you know, that, that, that's another thing, I mean, as far as. Based on these resolutions and how they went. The clerk and the assistant clerk, as far as the preparation of the agenda and the packets. I just wanna be clear, I don't wanna violate what we just voted on. So I'm totally out of the picture, if they're sinking their swimming, on that part together with the package of the, the present, the agendas. All right, I think we should have asked them before we did that, but it is what it is, you heard that, Kelly?
I think they can reach out to Columbia County and, uh.
Okay, all right, great, well, so, wait, hold on, we need, we need a motion for.
Adjournment?
We need, no, well, we, well, yeah, that, but first we need a motion, everyone move to the ninth.
I'm making a motion, we have the meeting on June nineteenth, brother.
All right, so the regu- so the motion is for the regularly scheduled town council meeting for the sixteenth, move to June ninth, is there a second? I second, all, all in favor, should I?
Uh.
I'll, I'll say nay, okay, motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I second, all in favor, yes.
I like, I'll read this, you like.
Yeah, hold on, I second.
I'll be back in the last round, if you get all that. I'll see y'all.
Hey, look west, yes, thank you for your service.
I did not, answer.
Yeah, yeah, all right, yeah, I just wanted to remind all my servants. Yes, thank you, everybody.